How's your campaign going, Brian?
It's nonexistent.
Okay. So not getting into it too much?
No, sir.
Is that good? It is what it is.
Yeah. I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm barely at above water as it is between the pool and work and everything else.
Yeah, no, it's crazy. Absolutely crazy. So I was looking at some numbers today and...
I call to order this regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission on Monday, March 28, 2022, at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge. Clerk Baugh, please take the role.
Commissioner Allsager?
Here.
Commissioner Esman?
Here.
Commissioner Eke?
Here.
Commissioner Ronan?
Here.
Commissioner Bush is excused. Vice Mayor Simon?
Here.
Mayor Perschacher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, we have a quorum. We will continue this meeting. Today, we have the pleasure of being introduced to Mount Pleasant's new social crisis advocate, Krista Carabelli. Director Loria, I give you the floor for this introduction.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to introduce Krista Carabelli, who recently joined the Division of Public Safety as our social crisis advocate. A two-time graduate of Central Michigan University, Krista earned her master's degree in clinical professional counseling. Krista's previous work experience includes service as a social worker, domestic violence counselor, and a sexual assault counselor. For the past few years, Krista has worked with RISE, specializing in trauma and crisis counseling. RISE, as some of you know, is an agency providing support services for survivors of both domestic violence and sexual assault. In the past, RISE has often supplied on-scene assistance to our police department. Because of this successful partnership and overwhelming need for mental health support services, RISE and the city have entered into a one-year pilot program. The purpose of this agreement is to offer networking services to individuals suffering from mental health and temporary crisis issues, as well as substance abuse and drug overdose situations. An innovative concept for public safety divisions of our size, this new position will provide further guidance to first responders in dealing with these types of encounters and incidents. It will also connect individuals to additional resources in obtaining specialized help. I do want to call out and give some sincere thanks to a few individuals. First, former manager Nancy Ridley, without her guidance and support, we would not be here today. Al Kaufman. Al, when I talked to him initially, he told me to think big. And I did, and that's why we're here today. Commissioner, or Mayor Perschacher, rather, and Commissioner Ronan, thank you again for your guidance and support. Commissioner Eke, thank you for listening to me and helping me through some of this. Joyce Henricks, from the Mount Pleasant Area Diversity Group. Elizabeth Husbands, from RISE. The head of RISE, the director of RISE, Jennifer Page. And I would be, it wouldn't be appropriate if I didn't thank the current city manager, Aaron Descends. When we came in here and met for the first time, and you know, you kind of have to maybe resell this program or get a commitment, he was with me lockstep and barrel from the first step. There was never a hiccup in the exchange between Nancy Ridley and manager Descends, so I couldn't thank him, can't thank him enough. I do want to thank all the men and women of the Division of Public Safety who have embraced this position, especially my administrative team, which is Assistant Police Chief Andy Latham, Lieutenant Brandon Bliss, Record Supervisor Christie Dush, Fire Chief Rick Beltnick, and Assistant Fire Chief Doug Lobzinger. The Division of Public Safety is very excited to see this pilot program take off, as we continue to serve with pride and integrity, and now compassion. Please join me in welcoming Krista to our department's ranks.
I just want to say thank you. This is an innovative, amazing piece of work that we're doing together. I'm so excited to integrate some mental health, on-scene crisis advocacy alongside our amazing officers. I've felt incredibly welcome over at PD, and I have felt incredibly supported over there. And so I'm really excited how this is going to continue to flourish and hopefully grow for our community. Thank you.
Welcome, Krista.
Thank you.
All right, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? I would like to add to item 21. With the approval of Commissioner Allsager, I'd like to add there the recommendation from the Appointments Committee of David McGuire to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Is there a motion to accept the agenda with the additions?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, the same? Motion carries. The agenda will move forward. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment on agenda items. Have we received any emails for public comment?
Yes, Mayor, we have. There are 11 emails that were on your dais regarding the item number 19 and 20. Summarize those, that there was 10 of those that are in favor of reciprocity for Cassano, and one that opposes it. And then in regards to the Broadway Street, which is number 15, we have three emails received, all of them in support of the closure of Broadway.
Thank you. If you wish to make a comment, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address before you make your comment. If you're joining by the meeting by Zoom, please use the raised hand feature or star nine. If you're joining Zoom by phone, once you are recognized, you'll be moved in so that you can be heard and make your comment. Please state your name and your address before your comment. You will have five minutes. Hello?
Hello, I'm Deb Carey. I own Consono's, and I do live in Vestaburg at this time with my father.
Can you step closer to the microphone?
I'm living in Vestaburg, 7434 Howard City Admiral Road in Vestaburg with my father right now. I've become aware recently of the absence of Liz Bush and Jacob Kane at this time, and I think it's very important that their discussion be included in the discussion today. I'm aware of your lawyer's recommendation of shelving the reciprocity. I don't know his reason, because that wasn't given. I would like to know why, and I'm sure the citizens would like to know why as well. I believe it's very important that this ordinance passes with Jacob Kane's recommendation of reciprocity. I believe that every available opportunity for discussion, and that includes Liz, Jacob, and I believe your lawyer should be there, for the purpose of full transparency. Otherwise, there's going to be that terrible taste in the mouth, the suspicion that something's fishy, and just wondering why the hell isn't the city supporting their local residents? Their daughter got this wonderful opportunity that the city created, and you didn't include your own. Not you, your predecessors. Amy is most seasoned. She's been here for three years and three months. I've been attending the meetings regularly since about 2017, and I was active in the ad hoc group for the research to do medical marijuana, the recreational part. And Jacob Kane, he's been involved since about 2015. He was involved before I started. Jacob knows the history, the growing pains, I hope I can get through this, the strength and weaknesses of the ordinance. And I would hope that you would have the respect for his knowledge, all the time in that research, and the precise language, because he learned as time goes on. This stuff changes for a while weekly. So I'm singing the praises of Jacob Kane. Let me tell you a little bit about your lawyer. I've had experience with the lawyer, but I just want to remind you, he makes recommendations. He's not your boss. He wasn't elected by the people. You are his employers. That's all I'm going to say about it at this time, because the point is, I believe you should do what Jacob recommends. This will, if you go to the next step, it will take it to the people. Let the people decide. And in order for that to happen, you've got to have the players there. You need Liz. You need Jacob. He wrote the thing. What if people have questions about that? And your lawyer, why, I don't know why he's doing that. I would like to know. It would settle my heart. Not that you need to care about that. But I want you to know, the people will support you if you say, this is what we think we should do, and this is what Jacob says to do, so we're going to go with that. And it might be challenged. I guarantee it's probably going to be challenged. But the way Jacob has that worded, it's not a form of a contest. And if it needs to become a contest, you need to tell the people, though, that who's challenging it, because it makes you guys look like you're not interested. I know it's in your heart. I know.
I'm sorry, but your five minutes are up.
Okay. Can I just say, for this reason, I'm requesting you postpone your decision until a proper discussion with transparency can be held with the author of the person who wrote the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me have my time.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and make a statement?
Hello, everyone. I talk a lot louder than my mother. My name's Micah Foken. I live at 910 East Chippewa Street here in Mount Pleasant, and I appreciate the time today. I'm here today to support Consono, Mount Pleasant's first and only truly locally-owned medical marijuana retail store under the law that passed in 2018. And I also had the opportunity to review the language change in the medical and recreational ordinance. It was posted on Thursday, and after reading it, I decided today that I was going to speak very briefly. Reciprocity is the ability to have all five retail stores in Mount Pleasant have the ability to do both medical and recreational, and I think it's a great concept, and I believe it works with the current, the past, and I believe the new commissioners, from starting small and growing from there. I also have seen that the city lawyer is not recommending this. That is pretty upsetting, but seems to be the norm here in our city. So I'm not going to take much more of your time, but as I have spoken before in the past, the market has changed and has changed dramatically. And for the last year and a half, I've been watching this be shelved and continue to be shelved. But the odd thing is, today, I actually agree with my mother on shelving this yet another two weeks, so the person that actually wrote the ordinance can be here for questions, and we would have a full panel of commissioners. With the absence of Liz today, that is not the case. So I appreciate your time, and I look forward, one way or another, to hear what the outcome of our locally-owned medical dispensary store is going to be. Consono is not going to be here much longer. The market has changed, the way that people renew their medical cards have changed. There are still medical people that rely on our business, but without the volume of recreational, we will not be able to continue to serve the citizens that rely on our store for the medicine that we are able to provide them. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Turpin, and I live at 611 Schoolcrest Avenue in Claire, actually. I'm coming today to support Consono's request for a recreational license, and I know I've heard a lot of towns, a lot of councils have debate about this, and most people's worry, you know, when they throw out that they should have a limit on these things, is that it's going to increase the amount of people who use cannabis in their town, and they're worried about that. But truly, the same amount of people are going to use it, no matter what. You have to get that idea out of your head. They're either going to get it from an at-home source, a grower, an illegal source, or a store, okay? And we see no tax revenue at all in our town from illegal sources, obviously, or even from caregiver sources. It's difficult for patients also, you should know, to even find a caregiver if they're participating in cannabis use through the Medical Act. So, you know, the idea of passing the legalization and to offer these dispensaries is to actually increase safe access to patients and people who need it for other conditions that they haven't necessarily applied for an application for. So we have to stop thinking about dispensaries like they're up somewhere, somebody's going to go to get intoxicated, okay? They walk into the store, they buy their medicine, and they go home and have it there, okay? So really, truly, I guess my question to you is, why do we need a physical limit on how many businesses can have a recreational license if capitalism already does that? Because I don't think Mount Pleasant has a limit on how many doctor's offices can be here, or hospitals, or pharmacies, or herbal stores, rehabilitation centers, anything like that, right? So truly, even though, you know, I know you're thinking, you know, we're increasing access to people having drugs, that's not what it is. We want to increase safe access to medicine that's being regulated and tested carefully, okay? So, and you know, the other thing is, the city has an obligation to make sure they're providing services for people who have paid for a state license. The government has an obligation to serve these people, and in a fair way, and through a competitive market, and having a monopoly with corporate dispensaries that are upping prices all over the state is not going to help increase access, safe access for patients. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sergio Valiente. I own a cultivation company in 1110 North Fancher. It's my first time doing this. I'm a little nervous. As the gentleman was saying, the market is changing, and I plan to provide several jobs, local jobs, and due to the changes, which I've invested over a million dollars in this facility, the whole, got the whole property, made it beautiful, been dealing with Jake, you guys have been very great to me. I'm very grateful for the opportunity. I'm not complaining, but the market is changing, and if I'm not issued a recreational license, it's going to fail. It's not my fault. I didn't design this. I'm here as an investor. I moved to the city. I love it here. I'm very grateful. I'm very grateful. Thank you. And if my company is not issued a recreational, I think I sent an email, I'm not, I think it was to, she's not here today, though. And I don't have much, I didn't plan to speak. I wasn't sure what's going to happen here, but that's all I got to say at this point. If I don't get this license, I'm going to have to fail. I'm going to fail. I got a Class A medical license, and it's useless. It cost me $11,000 and I have no use. What I'm requesting for is a Class B rec to provide product for dispensaries like the gentleman over there, and recreational. I like the whole medical sector, because it was to give opportunity to patients that get discounts to get their medicine, but it's out of my control. It's, it took a big turn, and it's not my fault, you know? It's, I guess, it's a new industry, and mistakes were made by the state of Michigan. They didn't review correctly, and it's going to fall on me. Not me, but the people that are investing in this business as well. I ask if you could please maybe grant a couple recreational licenses for the class, for the cultivators in Mount Pleasant. And by the way, Jacob and Brian have been absolutely great to me. They've pretty much held my hand through the process, and I don't know what else to say. I just need help at this point. I have a lot of money invested, and when I open, it's going to fail. It's already guaranteed, and I can't turn back now. I have, you know, four or five employees that I've been dealing with that I'm probably going to be hiring locals, and I probably can't hire at this point. So I mean, it's, turning me down is turning down revenue and also employment for the city of Mount Pleasant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. It's 1110 North Fancher in Mount Pleasant.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience?
Hello, I'm Mick Stinkowitz, 621 North Kenny. I'm here also to support Consono. Most owners already said what I was planning to say, so I'll keep it brief. My main concern is yet another empty storefront downtown, and the idea that the city is not so interested in keeping small businesses, especially local businesses, in business. So if you're comfortable with that, that's your prerogative, but at the very least, this question should be tabled until the whole council is here. I don't want to see another empty storefront downtown. We should be encouraging businesses not closing them, and Consono just is not going to be able to stay in business with only its recreational, or I'm sorry, medical license. Another point, I lost. I guess that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm Sid Smith, 730 East Bluegrass Road. I've lived in Mount Pleasant since 1943, and have always enjoyed my time here. Tonight, I just want to speak about your number 16, which is the street closure, and I believe it's Broadway Street. And it would be, I would think, you don't want people speaking when they have items on the agenda. Is that right? You want them to speak now?
On the items on the agenda, yep. If you have something outside of the agenda, we have a speaking area after.
Okay. So what I would like to say is the street closure on Broadway, my office sits and overlooks it, is very, very detrimental to the downtown. Now, when I say the downtown, I'm talking about the retailers, of which we don't have many, but also the bars, restaurants, because of the parking issue more than anything else. And let me just say that years ago, when we redid the downtown, we got rid of the one-way streets, because people were actually coming off Michigan Street on the motor, people that didn't know we're downtown, and by the time they figured it out, they were at High Street due to one-way streets. And so that became a terrible situation for trying to recruit new retail stores. So what we tried to do in our planning back then was to make it user-friendly, not just to the community, but also to the visitors, so we could try to upgrade our sales down there. And again, as I just brought up, you have very few retailers down there. I'm speaking in terms of my wife's building. She's here. She'll have her say. But we have always tried to get retailers, and we just landed the bookstore, which we're very excited about. But in order to keep these people, we've got to give them front door parking. And so closing down the street not only confuses your out-of-town traffic, if they come down Broadway, all of a sudden, they got to turn left, and next thing you know, they're on the university, they go to Michigan Street, they take a right. I mean, you got to try to picture yourself as a visitor. So it's just something I'd really like you to reconsider, the closing of that. And if not that, at least table it until you've done some real thorough studies on how it harms the retailers and the people in Mount Pleasant that need parking when they go downtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Judy Smith, and I'll follow up with a few inside... Hello, my name is Judy Smith, and I'll follow up with a few incidental things that Sid left out. We own the building at the corner of University and Broadway. And in that building, there are between 16 to 20 employees every day. And they park on University and Broadway. And do you know, that takes up 16 to 20 spots every single day. Now, prior to the new ordinance, when the police used to be able to go and chalk their tire, move them out, they used to park in the permit lots, which was terrific. Now, today, I drove through, I drove through town and looked at the two permit lots behind my building, and they were practically empty. Well, if we could chalk the cars again, that, these cars would be off the street, and there would be places for the people of Mount Pleasant to come downtown and park. I can't tell you how many of my friends say to me, I can't find a place to park anymore. And we have to somehow change that situation. Now, Lisa Swindlehurst and I have talked about a solution, but I'm not gonna lay that on you tonight. It's not my reason I'm here. I'm here to ask you to reconsider about not closing the street this summer. It's so important to leave that Broadway Street open, so people that come to town, the parents of the CMU students, the visitors, they can get through. The restaurants that are on Broadway, Ponder, Midori, the drugstore, they have tables for their guests. And it seems to work, even Pure Vitality, who's in my building, they have tables also. So I'm here to ask you to reconsider and not close it this summer. And I'm hoping that the people that do work downtown will reconsider and not park on, you know, Broadway, University, and park back off. We have to come up with a, a way to get them off our main streets. There, there has to be a solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rosemary Gray from Gray's Furniture. I'm probably one, actually, between Trillium and myself, of the few businesses that are left in the downtown. And, and no fault of my own, I've worked hard. My concern is, closing the streets is not a good idea for retailers. I'm not sure who made that decision and why it was made. It would be something that I would like to know, because it, it doesn't happen right in front of my building, but I can't tell you how many people that have come downtown and says, why are the streets closed? There's really nothing downtown to close the streets for, anyway. Unfortunately, we have asked many times, you know, why are we not getting more businesses in downtown? Coming back with, well, we've tried, and the city doesn't work with us, or there's just nothing down there, why do we want to go down there? I feel that our parking situation is, is a, something that really needs to be addressed. I think that the communication between the city and the retailers is not flowing as well as it should. And I'm not just saying the retailers, but even the restaurant owners and the people that we have in our downtown. But we've been here since 1974, the store has been here since 1945. I would like to see my business turned to my children, which they have been working there for about 20 years now, and have it still be successful. The communication between the retailer and the city isn't there, because I have not had one person come and say, what are your thoughts about the downtown closing? I don't think it's a good idea. I really don't think it's a good idea, for a lot of different reasons that I don't want to get into tonight. But anytime you close something, and, and people can't get around, they get frustrated. And, and the, the traveling that they have to do to get, to find a parking spot, they just leave. I mean, because you've taken away all the parking in the downtown, and then there is no more parking. It's hard to, for the employees and the employers to find a place. And now we have no parking, ticketing, or anything like that. So people are staying in one spot all day long, and you have a lot of offices in the downtown, and they'll stay there all day. I'm, I'm guilty of it myself. I mean, I try, in the summertime, I'm parking over on other streets, but sometimes that's even hard. So I think an issue that should be addressed more so than closing the streets, or worrying about medical marijuana, or any of all that stuff, consider the parking. Considering, consider getting some businesses in that downtown, because there, I travel all over looking at other towns. And why can Claire be so vibrant? Why can Tecumseh, which is a small town that is in the middle of nowhere, and it doesn't have a casino, it doesn't have a university, it doesn't have anything, and they're so vibrant? Why is it that we are not? We have the greatest park system ever. I love our park systems. Why can't we work on our downtown to have pride in what's down there? And don't say that, oh, people shop the internet, and small businesses are just not there anymore. That's not true. Because I'm a woman, I love to shop, and when I go to other towns that have great shopping, I'm down there. I, you know, I'm there. And we have people come in every day, that say, that have come from out of town, and they'll say, are there any other shops downtown? Of course, there's Trillium, so we always, you know, tell them to go there. But they say, we love your store, we absolutely love it, we wish there was more. And I think without the city communicating and working together with us, that will never happen. And I think we need to look at that more than we do almost anything else. Because when you think about it, where does the city have the car show? Where does the city do some of the things that they do? If we didn't have our community downtown, what would we have? If it's gone, if my store doesn't make it, and the Trillium doesn't make it, it's done. It's sad. To me, it's sad, because I love my store, I love the people in this town, it's a great community, but it's, it's just really dying in the downtown. And, and I wish that there was somebody that just worked on, we used to have, when we had the Downtown Business Association, somebody that tried to work getting businesses in. I asked that question at the last meeting I was at, and they said, no, they don't have anybody that even tries to work to do that. So that's all I have to say. Okay?
Thank you.
My name is Rich Swindlehurst, I reside at 11784 Easy Street in Coatedon. I'm also a property owner and business owner in downtown Mount Pleasant. I'm here to speak in opposition to new business item number 15 in regards to Broadway Central. My understanding was it was kind of a, for necessity, rushed together idea when COVID struck, to try something to be able to promote. Really, helping the restaurants survive is my understanding of the intent of it. And definitely appreciate it, the attempts of anything and everything that could be done two years ago when that happened. We've now had it closed for the last two summers. By midsummer last year, I think there was a lot of frustration. There was a meeting in, I believe it was early August, that I think Commissioners Elsager and Ronan were both at. And I was there as well. I felt that the sentiment was very much over it. It was tried, it hasn't worked out for us. And that's definitely the sentiment I continue to hold. More than anything, having a business on Broadway Street, the goal is being on the main thoroughfare of the downtown, having the visibility, having cars drive by, see the business, see the action, the activity, et cetera. And through Broadway Central, unfortunately, through the last two seasons, we've seen the opposite of that. And it's seen more of a ghost town over those six months of the closure. And it's like, thank goodness, when it opened in mid-October last year, that we're kind of back to normal again. So then seeing that it was gonna be, or it's proposed to be done again this summer, I'm opposed to that, and went around the downtown a little bit today, speaking to some people, and received some similar comments to that. I think that covers most of my thoughts, but I guess realistically, the only other things, the concept of Broadway Central I'm not so opposed to. Perhaps we can continue to maybe label that area of the downtown Broadway Central, host events there, have rolling closures, close the streets for six hours while there's an event there, open it back up after the event. But overall, just, I think that maintaining traffic through our downtown for the visibility of the businesses there is a big help that we've lost the last two years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Christina Scheller, I live at 515 North Fancher. I'm here to speak in support of closing Broadway, as I guess probably the only person here that's actually just someone that liked to go downtown in the summer and eat outside. I thought it was tremendously successful. I ended up going downtown the last two summers, way more than I ever did in the past. And it was because I knew that when I went down there, there was gonna be a place for me to sit, I could meet friends down there, we could sit outside, we could enjoy the day. Whereas if you're sitting in one of the restaurants downtown, many of them are quite small, because the buildings are old, you might not find a table, it's cramped, you, you might feel pressure to leave quickly because other people are waiting for a table. I really, really enjoyed the time that I spent at Broadway, sitting outside. And I understand maybe you would want to close it for a shorter period, maybe just like the core summer months, when there aren't that many people in town. I've never had an issue finding parking downtown, I go down there quite a lot. So I think there's, there's definitely a lot we can work with, that it shouldn't just be scrapped, because a few businesses are complaining. I think there's a lot of people that really enjoyed it, and that you guys should consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience here at City Hall? Is there anyone on Zoom?
Yeah, three people on Zoom. I'm going to transfer Caleb Perry, or Caleb Carey first.
Thank you.
Caleb, you've joined the meeting, if you'd like to unmute and speak?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Caleb Carey, 910 East Chippewa Street, Mount Pleasant, Michigan. I am owner of Consano, the med provisioning, and I'd like to speak about the equivalency ordinance. The equivalency would save my business, it would secure a future. And more licenses would be more money from the state to the city, and to the county as well. I feel like it's a, a win-win. With the medical market, right now, there's less than 500 cardholders. It's not a sustainable business. And recreational retail license is necessary for the survival of our business. And all I can do is beg and plead that this business really, really needs this, it really needs help. A vote on no is killing the business. And that would be very sad, considering it's a small, family-owned, local business. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna promote Eric Knut.
All right, can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Eric Knut. My address is 703 North Washington Street. I'm here not only as a long-term resident of Mount Pleasant, but also as an employee of a provisioning center here in Mount Pleasant, Pure Options, located at 2157 South Mission. I'm here to talk about item number, I believe it's 20, considering amendments to the adult-use marijuana ordinance. We at Pure Options, we've been here, operating with no complaints, no issues, no compliance issues, for nearly two years, since we were first licensed for med in April of 2020. I personally have never spoken publicly about this during a council meeting before, this is my first time here speaking. But I've been following this issue since it began, because I am very passionate about this. Ever since adult-use retail became available in the city, our business has been struggling. Consano has been struggling, and we've been struggling. The reciprocity language that was recommended by the city staff, giving us the ability to operate in the adult-use market, is the only way for us to survive and continue to provide a service that many residents of your city rely on us for. Over the past nearly two years, we provided a safe and comfortable environment for Mount Pleasant residents to not only obtain medical cannabis, but to learn more about the products that they're buying, and to leave the store feeling confident that they, that they got what they needed to get, and that they got the medicine that's going to help them. Expanding into adult-use sales would also provide us the opportunity to open up, to open up more jobs for the city of Mount Pleasant, and to provide much-needed raises for our current staff. Without the ability to sell adult-use and operate on a level playing field in this city, ourselves, along with local businesses, are going to be forced to close our doors. And it's going to leave not only multiple residents of this city, including myself and my wife, without jobs, but it also leaves the residents of Mount Pleasant less options, and less, less ability to vote with their money. We'd be left with three large corporations, two large corporations, and that would be it. And just in closing, I only am requesting that the commission please consider the faith of the employees and local businesses in the city by allowing reciprocity language recommended by the city staff to move forward to the public hearing. Our community wants to see us succeed. Our community wants to see Consano succeed. Reciprocity would provide the opportunity for all marijuana provisioning centers in the city to operate on a fair, level playing field, and give residents of Mount Pleasant the opportunity to support whichever businesses they wish to support. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to promote phone number ending in 1984.
Hello?
Go ahead, sir.
Good, everybody? Thank you. Petro Tolles, 306 East Broadway Street, Mount Pleasant. Good evening, Commissioners. I wish I could be there tonight, but due to some medical issues, I can't. I would like to talk to you on item 15 tonight. I want to bring the city manager and the new commissioners up to speed. That we did have a meeting last summer. Commissioner Ronan was there, Mayor Joseph was there, and I was present, and some city staff. And we had a meeting with about roughly 25 business people downtown on the Broadway Street closure. I believe Mrs. Gray was also there, and the owner of Trillium, which I can't remember her name right now. But there was 25 business owners that showed up there, and there was at least 25 people that were in opposition to this. It just doesn't make any sense. We were trying to get some rapport built with the business owners, that we have meetings with some of the city staff, or some of the commissioners, can meet with business owners, and run stuff by them that's going to happen. We, there was a bunch of plans to do a bunch of stuff downtown, and not much was done, and it really wasn't promoted, and basically it was a waste of time. I just feel that closing Broadway down again does not accomplish anything. There's outside patios where people can go and dine on them. If there's extra parking spaces that are need to put an extra picnic table out in front of a place, fine, do that. But you've got to build some type of rapport with the business people and communicate with them. And there's no communication going on now. And I can see that, because we just started this meeting, started, and it was mentioned that there was three letters in favor of closing Broadway Street, okay? I just talked to some other business people two days ago and found out this was going to be on the agenda, and none of the business people were informed. So how was that building rapport, people? And another thing, I've mentioned it 100 times now, the businesses are 80% owned by owners downtown. And just like Mrs. Gray says, if those businesses go out, that's going to be a ghost town down there. It's not going to help matters at all. So I think something definitely has to be done with having commissioners on some type of board, and the business board starting back up, and get dialogue going back and forth, because this doesn't help matters. Also, I want to make one quick comment before my cell phone goes dead. I'm glad this Taco Boy thing got resolved. I thought it was going to be resolved before I got off the commission, and that's what I was led to believe. And it should definitely have been done by city staff instead of spending money for attorney fees and causing Mr. Belteras and the city both to expend money for attorney fees, which this could have been resolved by city staff. I was on a zoning board for eight years, and the procedure was back then, if it got turned down and you didn't have a full board, you cannot bring it back for five years. And that's why it was implemented. Now, instead of five years, it's one year. But there had to be a full board to hear it. That's the only fair way to do it. And you had a 2-2 vote, you know, trying to vote it down, then Mr. Orlick tried to put another motion and knock it down. That was 2-2. In my view, that doesn't turn anything down and deny anything. 2-2 does not constitute a no vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments?
No one else on Zoom?
Thank you. At this time, I will close public comments. Manager desents, please review the receipt of petitions and communications.
Thank you, ma'am. Receipt of petitions and communications includes the city manager report on pending items, 2021 annual report, and minutes of the airport joint operations and management board from January.
Thank you, manager desents. For the consent calendar, are there any items the commission would like to remove and place in the agenda for discussion? Seeing no movement, manager desents, please review the consent calendar for us.
Consent calendar includes approval of the minutes from the special meeting held March 9, 2022, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held March 14, 2022, approval of the minutes from the closed sessions, four in total, held March 14, 2022, consider commitment to purchase road salt for the 2022-23 season through the State of Michigan MI Deal Extended Purchasing Program, which will allow the city to commit to purchase 800 tons of salt ahead of the next winter season through the state's MI Deal Program. Consider Michigan Department of Transportation resolution authorizing the city manager to approve a contract amendment for the approach slope clearing project at the Mount Pleasant Airport, which will be to correct an error on the contract that MDOT had found. Consider setting a public hearing for April 11, 2022, to obtain public input on the Michigan Economic Development Corporation revitalization and placemaking grant proposal. Consider setting a public hearing for April 11, 2022, to obtain public input on the Michigan Economic Development Corporation Public Gathering Spaces Grant application, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
Is there a motion to accept the consent calendar as set? So moved.
A second.
And a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're now at item 13 of the agenda. This is a public hearing for the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Application, and to consider the approval of the resolution on the same. Manager desents, please give the commission an overview.
Thank you, ma'am. So the city is very happy to consider moving forward with a grant application to the DNR Trust Fund Program. The city is partnering with Union Township on this effort to connect Nelson Park to Mission Creek. The planned connection is part of the Michigan Pathway and GKB Trail Plan, and is in the city's Parks Master Plan. The city would contribute $525,000 to the project. Union Township has pledged $375,000 to the project, and the city is applying for a $300,000 grant from the state, for a total project of $1.2 million.
Okay, if there is any member from the audience who wishes to speak during the public hearing, please stop to the podium, state your name and address. You'll be given five minutes to make your statement. If you are a member of our Zoom audience, please use the raised hand feature or star nine if joining by phone. You will be recognized and moved into the meeting where you can make your statement. I will now open the public hearing. Are there any emails for the public hearing today?
Oh, there are not.
Thank you. Any Zoom audience willing to come forward?
No one with their hands raised.
Is there anyone in the audience willing to come forward for the public hearing on the Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Application? Please come forward, thank you. Please be sure to state your name and address.
My name's Phil Hertzler, 2113 McDonald Drive, Mount Pleasant. I live in Union Township. I didn't expect to come up here and talk today. I thought there'd be more public comment on this issue rather than some of the others. But I'd just like to express my enthusiastic support for this project as connecting some of our existing beautiful pathways through the parks, and bringing in another park into the system. Will provide opportunities for local residents to get out and recreate, get to parks without having to drive to them, and so on. And I know, I know people in the subdivision north of Michigan, Mission Park there, that would be delighted to see this project go forward. So on behalf of everyone else who isn't here to speak for the project, I'd like to strongly encourage you to proceed with it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak at this time? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Do any of the commissioners have any questions or comments? Commissioner Ronan?
I, I'm in favor in the general concept, I'm not, but I was wondering, it seems like we have several acres of land that are on the north side of the, what is it, Crawford. Is there some reason why we wouldn't put the sidewalk along the land we want to redevelop?
I think you're referring to the west side, the west side of Crawford.
Yeah, I do apologize, Commissioner, I didn't catch all of that. Could you repeat the question?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a huge question, and certainly I don't want to stall the development of this, but maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but it's, the extension goes down to the Mission Creek Park, right? And it's scheduled to be on the east side of the street. I was wondering, on the west side of the street, there may be a couple hundred acres of land that we're hoping to develop. I was wondering if there's a reason why the sidewalk wouldn't be on the side of the street that the city owns and that we're planning to develop eventually. Again, I'm not, I'm just curious what the decision-making was.
Yeah, for the purposes of this one, it's because we have to go up to River Road, and then I believe from there, the township is carrying north and also to the east as well, too. So it really is just a matter of it being the shortest distance for that connection eventually, but something the city commission could consider in the future, definitely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ronan.
I had a resident ask if there was another place that could be crossed on Pickard besides the Harris-Pickard-Crawford intersection because of the hill there. I know that we go, we're planning on going along the railroad for a brief moment, and then moving west and then going north again. I'm wondering if we could just follow the railroad and have a crossing there for bikes and walkers to get on the sidewalk that's already there.
Perfect. We do have our Parks Director, Phil Rizkinner, here, so he might be able to lend some insight in that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the first question, the reason why we're staying on the east side of the road is so that there isn't a crossing of Crawford. People tend to go a little fast down that road, so we don't want people going back and forth. And we're working with Union Township with Fox Meadows at the end of the road there. And so instead of having to cross the road, come down, cross back over to get to the dog park, it's going straight up the east side. So if that makes sense, that was the main reason for that. For your question, basically, the reason why we're going up Harris and crossing at the light there, Harris Crawford light.
There's no light there.
I mean, the reason why we're going there and there's no light is because if, in order to get a 10-foot wide path, which is in the regulations for trails, like the road, we have to use that right-of-way.
Okay.
In order to make 10-foot wide trails. And if we went to Main Street where the light is, you have to cross back over the river. And so we would need a pedestrian bridge there, because there's no way to widen that roadway. That's the main, the main reason. The plan has changed a little bit. It doesn't go through the cemetery anymore. It actually goes down Broadway and straight up Harris.
Oh, okay. So it comes down, it comes out at Broadway?
Yeah, and we'll go straight down Broadway, and then take a right on Harris and go straight all the way.
Okay. Is there an, is there a thought in the future of putting a light at Harris and Pickard?
After speaking with engineering and Stacy Torrey, right now, the numbers don't warrant it. I know it's something that has been discussed in the past. Putting the trail there may help, but in the actual trail project, we have built in a flashing beacon there. So there will be something there. It's not just crossing the road. You know, when you come up to the road, you'll be able to hit the button, it'll start flashing, and you can go across. So it's not perfect, but unfortunately, there's not a whole lot of options that are perfect to get up there.
No, I understand that, but I know that there is very few individuals that drive 35 through there.
Yeah.
And then you have the hill.
Yep.
I've sat at Crawford trying to go south for what seems to be forever.
I take that way to get to and from work, so I drive it every day. So I understand exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, and I worry about bikers, pedestrians walking across there. Would there be, you know, maybe in the future, we'd have a light there, I don't know, or maybe we could convince MDOT to cut down that hill a little bit, right? I mean, I know that's, that's near impossible. Or maybe we create a pedestrian bridge there.
It's definitely something we can talk about in the future. At this point, this application, you know, we're still in the preliminary designs of the trail. So until we actually get engineered drawings, you know, that'll be the next step, and that'll start next year. But at this point, this is the most, this is probably the most cost-effective way to build the trail.
Well, I'm also concerned about the fact that MDOT has been toying with the fact of making that part of the M20 route.
Right.
Which means larger vehicles, more traffic.
Yeah, and at that point, it most likely would jump up the vehicle count to one, a light.
A light, yeah, okay.
That's our hopes, anyway.
Okay. All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any more questions before we let him go and sit back down? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from the commission? Is there a motion for the approval of the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Application?
To move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions before we go to vote? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no.
Amy, we need a roll call on that, please.
A roll call, you're right, okay. Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Eke?
Yes.
Commissioner Asman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simon?
Yes.
Mayor Preshbacher? Yes. Motion carries. All right, we are moving to item 14 on the agenda, which is to consider a budget amendment for a water plant operator. Manager desents, please give the commission an overview.
Yeah, so the city's had a reorganization plan for our water plant since 2018. At that time, we used to have water operators that would swap between the plant and the distribution system. 2018, we put an end to that. Now we have plant operators as well as distribution operators. Part of that plan, too, was to bring onboard another water plant operator in 2023. However, we've had some recent changeover with personnel at the plant, also had increased regulatory scrutiny across the state when it comes to water plants as well, too. And some, again, just some personnel changeover over there, that because of these issues, we want to come to the city commission now and make a request for a budget amendment for $60,000 for 2022, and allow us to move forward and bring this water operator on a year early. So we feel like now is a good time to be able to do this. This will allow us to keep up with that increased regulatory scrutiny, also keep also keep up with some of our capital maintenance as well, too.
Do the commission, does the commission have any questions or comments? All right, is there a motion to approve the budget amendment for the water plant operator?
I recommend the city commission approve the budget amendment for $60,000 to cover the addition of a water plant operator for the remainder of 2022.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion on this? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're at item 15 on the agenda, is to consider the Broadway Central 2022 season closure and accompanying budget amendment for it. Manager DeSens, please give the commission an overview.
Thank you, Mayor. So Broadway Central refers to the block of Broadway between Main and University that was close to regular traffic and used as a social gathering space. This is held community organization and city-sponsored events and activities. Staff plans to add new elements this year if we end up closing it, which would include improved planters, hanging lights, and other evening activities. Staff has included a breakdown of the costs, which will be paid from the existing fund balance of the Economic Incentives Fund. Staff plans to explore the possibility of a social district in the near future if the city commission is in favor of that as well, too. So staff is recommending a motion to approve Broadway Central for the May 2nd through October 11th, 2022 season, and a budget amendment of $30,500 from the Economic Incentives Fund.
Does the commission have any questions or comments? Commissioner Alziger?
I think based on the public comment that we've heard tonight, I've changed my opinion. I'm going to be voting against this.
Anyone else? Commissioner Eke?
Commissioner Eke has a question.
Can you please lean forward?
Lean forward. We have heard people, a number of businesses indicate, you know, the impact on their business. And I am concerned now, so I do have questions in terms of what has been done in the past to look at the economic impact of closing, you know, the, this segment of Broadway? And if we have also looked at alternative areas where a similar social gathering space can be constructed?
I'll certainly do my best to address those questions, and I do believe we also have our downtown director, Michelle Sponseller, on as well, too. But to address the first one, the economic impact of closing, I think it'd be virtually impossible to separate that out because you just have so many different factors that are going on. Over the last two years, you've had a global pandemic that left many people working from home. Over the past year here, you've had a huge disruption in staffing for a number of places, people moving to new and different jobs, businesses having to restrict hours because of that, businesses having to essentially reply to supply chain issues as well, too. So I think it's, for the most part, impossible. A few things that we could probably look outside of that, and one, I know one of the comments that we've had is on parking. But one of the questions that I would have is, everyone here, I'm assuming, buys groceries, probably buys groceries from a Myers or a Walmart or something like that. Does anyone go there? And if you can't get within the first few parking spaces close to that building, do you just turn around and leave? Can't, can't get close enough to the building? So I don't think that that makes a great deal of wisdom when it comes to parking issues in the downtown. If people want to go to those downtown businesses, they will certainly frequent them. They will find a space to park, and they will park. As far as alternative areas, to be very honest with you, I could not answer that one, and that's one I would have to rely on Michelle for, as I was not here during the formulation of the location for what became Broadway Central.
Michelle, are you available?
Hi, I am. I'm trying to start my video. Sorry, let's see if I can do that. Oh, it looks like I can't. But anyway, I will join you by voice only. Sorry. So we did not look at other areas of downtown for a similar closure. This was an area that had the largest concentration of restaurants. That is why it was picked. Although we could look at other areas, I think that we would have similar concerns as far as people parking in the streets and utilization in the afternoon and evening. So I don't think that moving it was necessarily going to address those particular items.
Michelle, can you tell me how many parking spaces are in the downtown area that are designated for individuals to come in during the day?
Oh, goodness. I'm going to have to give you a rough number. I believe on-street parking, we have just around 700, and we have more than 900 in parking lots.
And have we ever seen 700 people in the downtown area taking up all of those spots?
Only at our Christmas event would I say that they're full.
And when that happens, we have closure of Main Street and Broadway for the parade.
Correct. And usually, part of Michigan Street as well, correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, I've been a fan of closing Broadway during the pandemic, to be honest. But I was very disappointed last year. It just, there was no coordination between businesses and closing, businesses and events. And it was oftentimes very sad to get downtown and see that it's just, it's empty. I mean, it was just, you know, we're told there were going to be all sorts of events taking place. We're going to have a stage there, and bands, and the social district idea I like. So I think this is a complicated analysis. But I certainly wouldn't support closing. You know, maybe we could do it half of the, we'll just keep it open. And if there's actually something taking place down there that businesses are involved in, and everybody's involved in, in June or July, we could say, okay, let's, we've had to close it so many times for these events, let's close it for the rest of the summer. But I have no faith that just closing it for the season would result in... Anyway, I don't know if you get the sense of that. I'm not against it, but I mean, that'd have to be much more taking place. I'll give you an example. So I funded a band to play. I didn't know I was going to fund it, but I wound up doing it. And, you know, there was no support from anybody. And the business wasn't involved, the city wasn't involved. I asked, could it be advertised? None of that. I'm just not a fan. Again, I could be swayed if events took place downtown that were meaningful, that were vibrant, that brought people downtown. Maybe sometime we could say, okay, it's at a point where we could close it. But just closing it now, there's no way I would support it, to be honest.
Commissioner Eke?
I would like to suggest one, there is, you know, I see, I see the, you know, how appealing this could be for residents, you know, to spend time downtown. At the same time, we are faced with a complicated situation of, you know, economic difficulty or challenges for our small businesses, and I'm concerned about that. I do think that this is something that would require a little bit more study than, than it seems to me we have undertaken. I don't see a list of activities or events that will be offered for, to justify closing this space at this point. I understand that COVID-19 probably made this possible. But since a lot of people are going to be outside walking around, and perhaps guests will be coming into town, I am troubled that, you know, we might cut off our noses, so to say, to spite our faces if we do this. I don't know, maybe that's a terrible analogy. But I am just simply really honestly reluctant to support this at this moment because I am worried about those small businesses.
Commissioner Alziger?
Maybe a compromise would be to close the north half of the street. Where already there's two bumpouts where there's seating, not as many parking spaces, and open up the south side of the street. I mean, not, not close the street, but have extra tables on the north side.
So basically making it into a one-way?
No, just to have the tables in the parking spaces. So you would lose parking spaces on the north side, and the street would still be open.
Maybe a few parking spaces.
I think that there are five parking spaces between Max and Emily's bumpout and Midori's. So it'd be five spaces there? No? Okay. Commissioner Asman?
So are you talking about just eliminating all those parking spaces and have seating there? Sorry, can you hear me better?
Yes.
Are you talking about eliminating those parking spaces, Mayor?
On, on just the one side, and then opening up all the ones that were closed last two years on the south side.
I just worry about safety when it comes to that. And my other comment is, I feel if the business owners were in favor of this, they'd be jumping at the chance to have it closed. It sounds like from everybody here in attendance today that they are pretty opposed to this idea, so. That's all.
Thank you. I did hear from Ponder's, who appreciated having the street closed. They appreciated the walk business. They appreciated the people who had to walk down through the downtown to find their, their restaurant. And I do believe Pure Vitality also enjoyed some of that walk-through business. Commissioner, Vice Mayor Simon?
Yeah, yeah. Just to build on your comment, we've heard from some businesses tonight that they might not be in favor. I've heard that it has helped Ponder and multiple other restaurants downtown that have been saved by this closure. So I think there are, you know, we've heard from the opposing side tonight, but there are two sides to this. Everyone who I know that's visited Mount Pleasant from outside of town has loved this idea. I've gone downtown way more often with the street closed, and it's the most vibrant I've ever seen our downtown when the streets are closed. I know there aren't a lot of events in the evening, but I would hope that restaurants and businesses use the opportunity to collaborate and use this space to hold events, to organize and collaborate, to hold more things in the evenings so that the space is utilized. I'm not convinced that parking is really an issue. We have plenty, and we've been working as a commission to make Mount Pleasant more walkable and bikeable so that the downtown is more accessible, especially when we make spaces to a gathering center like this. So I would be in favor of approving this.
Thank you. Any further thoughts? Comments, concerns, questions?
I hate to, I hate to be overly negative, but it was amazing to me that we had invited about 120 people who came to town for this concert. And for them to get food, they had to go to Burger King or McDonald's. So basically, what I had is 120 people come from out-town, outside the town, come to downtown Mount Pleasant and learn, there is nothing open. There's nothing to do here. So I mean, I think, I, I, I don't want to be overly negative, but there needs to be some working between businesses, these events, and sort of some coordination. Because I don't think those people are going to come back down to the, back to downtown Mount Pleasant and say, what a thriving, wonderful community. But again, we have differences of opinion, and I respect that.
Commissioner Eke?
I do agree with Commissioner Ronan, and this really does require some conversation with the business owners because they have a stake in this, you know? And without that, we are not going to clearly understand the implications of closing it or not closing it, you know, for them. I, I, I am just not comfortable voting in support at this moment. It has to be a collaborative effort.
So Michelle, are you still there?
I am.
All right. So what are your ideas for bringing people downtown? What are some things that you're brainstorming right now?
Well, one of the things in, in my memo indicated that I would reach out with the recreation team and ask them, as they are the leaders for special events. They are the most creative bunch, and I would ask them to fill in, what can we do over the summer? Is it music? What other activities we can come up with? But I wasn't part of the, or part of this plan was not myself coming up with the event ideas. I was looking for direction from the commission this evening, and I would then go and discuss with recreation. They in turn would bring back a plan to you.
Okay. Well, it sounds like there needs to be more events downtown. We used to have Max and Emily's Concert Series. I'm not sure, I have not heard if that's going to happen again this year. It hasn't happened in the last two years. But maybe something similar to that. And it wouldn't have to be big acts. I think that music tends to touch everyone in different ways, and it definitely brings people together. So something like that. Commissioner Eke?
Is it possible for us to take a one-year hiatus and just really study this? Put in place the events that will support us closing this? At least that way, we talk to the businesses, we work with them to organize something. If there is buy-in, we do it. At this moment, I don't see the events. I don't like saying we're going to do this, and then after the fact, start trying to figure out the events, and then nothing happens. And next year, we have this conversation. I would like us to take a break and look at this carefully, plan it, organize it, talk to the businesses, and come up with something concrete. That's my position right now.
How long of a break are you thinking, Maureen?
I just said one-year hiatus.
Okay.
Next year.
I couldn't hear you. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's just simply how I feel about this right now.
Manager DeSens?
Just to ask, or answer a question that you had asked Mayor about, what we're doing to bring people downtown as well, too. So the Central Business District did just have that series of budget amendments that had been approved by the city commission that includes billboards along Route 127, websites, social media ads that were boosting, radio spots, Restaurant Week, which we're planning as well, too, print materials, and murals as well, too. So the idea is to create marketing, a sense of place, and to bring more people down there.
I like that, but I don't, again, you know, sort of big events that would actually explain having that opening. I understand the purpose of a walkway, an open space, safe space. But how about, in Islant, for instance, they do have a summer festival, they have chais, they have concerts. I used to live in Islant, and they have all sorts of events that justified closing the whole section. Thought about it carefully. I'm just simply saying, let's, it's a wonderful idea. Please do not get me wrong. I just simply think that we have not worked with businesses to come up with something that would benefit them and benefit us. If we have concerts and chess games, those people who attend those events and will go to these spaces, these businesses and restaurants. At this moment, as my colleague Ronan says, if the whole space is open, there's no reason to have, you know, closure when they're not going anywhere.
Well, I would like to say that when there was a music event sponsored downtown, there was a tentative business owner that stated that he would sponsor it, but did not. So I would like to say that I think that we have reached out to businesses.
Well, COVID's changed everything. It transformed the entire society, in fact, the entire world. Let's start again. Let's see what we can do together. I want us to collaborate, and I think they probably want that, too.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah. We had once talked about allowing food trucks or stuff like that to be more vibrant in the city. I mean, I'd be really interested in that during social events. But just something, you know, if the business owners aren't going to cooperate, I think we just bring in our own stuff to, you know what I mean? But there has to be some way. But there has to be some way to, again, I want to work with businesses and things like that, but if they're not, if not, if they're not forthcoming, then maybe the city needs to get on, I, I don't know, but they're, I, I agree with taking a break and sort of saying, what, what's going to happen? And what can we launch to actually make it successful? So I, I think we'll pull on with Commissioner Ake, but I'm done.
Is there any more discussion? Is there a motion on the floor? Would somebody like to motion?
I move to approve Broadway Central for the 2022 season and to approve a budget amendment for the same.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. All those opposed, no?
No.
Motion fails. All right, we will move on to item 16. This is to consider a conditional street closure. Manager DeSantis, please give the commission an overview.
Absolutely. So the city received a special event application to take place on September 17th, 2022. The event will go from 8:00 PM until midnight. The proposed event would use Jackie Alley, Lot Number Nine and Court Street between Moser and Broadway. The event would be an electronic dance music concert with an estimated attendance of 2,000 people. The organizer plans to fence the perimeter around the event, hold a temporary liquor license for serving within the fenced area and supply portable restrooms and also a medic will be on site. The event is designed to bring students from Central Michigan University and surrounding communities to downtown Mount Pleasant. City staff has reviewed a number of ordinances, including ordinances governing loud music and noises as well as gatherings. In your packet, you will find answers to a number of questions that were received from city commissioners on this particular event. The city commission is asked to consider approval of the necessary street closure with conditions. We do also have, again, Downtown Director Michelle Sponseller on the line as well too. Michelle, anything to add on your end?
I don't have anything further. I just wanted to say that the applicant had a complete and a well-thought-out plan for this event regarding the space usage and all the questions that we typically go through, through the special event process. And you'll find all of that and more in your packet for tonight. We tried to come up with all the different topics that we might typically see when we review these, having to do with how trash is handled, barricades, the number of people that could fit in the space. So it's, it's a complete application and I don't think I have anything else to offer at this time.
All right, does the commission have any questions or concerns at this time?
What's the largest number of people the city's hosted in an event?
Was the question, what is the largest number we've had attend an event?
Yes, downtown, yeah.
Roughly 5,000 people during the height of the Christmas parade and that, but that's spread out over sidewalks all throughout downtown.
I mean, for an event like this where you're.
An event like this, we have certainly had close to 1,500 people on Broadway for the Jeff Daniels concert a few years ago. And we have close to 1,200 in Jackie Alley Parking Lot Two for the Craft Beer Festival.
So it's about 1,200 you have in there, okay. The other question I had is I spoke to the events people at the university who routinely do events like this. Have, have you asked them about what they thought about the space availability here to do some planning? Because they, they do this all the time. I, I don't, I forget the director's name. But she's going to get me a diagram of the space. She's diagrammed it out and looked at stuff like that.
That would be, that would be Misha, I, I believe. No, we, we haven't asked for their, for their input as we've done a number of events. And in this particular situation, the applicant has worked with sound engineers to develop the layout for the event along with the necessary fencing for alcohol control. So we could certainly speak to university events, but I'm not sure if they're going to bring new information to the table for this one.
Okay. Well, thank you. And you're, you're confident that you can manage that crowd downtown in that area?
Well, to be clear, the applicant has indicated that he will have private security. And additionally, Lieutenant Bliss has indicated that we will have officers, fire and medics on site as well.
That's not the question, but I'm glad there's going to be security and things.
Commissioner Ake?
Actually, Commissioner Ronan asked part of my question, which has to do with, you know, managing. But I was also looking at Director, Director Paul Loria here. And I wondered whether they've had any conversation with him regarding this, him or his unit regarding this. You know, I would expect that, you know, hopefully he'd have some input or they would have had some conversation. Director Loria?
Yes, Director Loria, your face kind of gives you away.
I, I just want to, I, I just think we need to be open and honest. If you have a concert downtown in this area, you have a large residential population to the north, okay? We will get complaints. They're, they're not party poopers, they're not, they're not trying to be difficult, but we will get complaints. And people do not like to hear, there's nothing we can do about it. They, they don't. So we try to manage it as best we can. Here you have a private business that's paying to have this, this concert. They don't want us, I mean, they want some sort of assurance that it's not going to be shut down at nine o'clock because of the noise. And I, I can't give them, I, I can't give them that. Now, to say we would do that, I, I'm not saying that either. We would work with them at all costs. But you guys have to understand that at all costs may be to the discomfort of our residents, some of our residents, which you then hear about, which is fine. But my main concern is, is I don't want it coming back on the department that we acted inappropriately either way. We're here to solve problems. And if you guys say, if you guys give this outing your blessing, we will, we will work with both of them. But I want you to know that there's going to have to be a huge outreach to the people in that neighborhood north. I, I, I mean, all the way to Pickard in that area that says, hey, look, from 8:00 PM to midnight, this is what you can expect. And if it absolutely becomes unbearable, call us. But they need to know a start time and an end time.
Can, can I ask another question? Yeah, so I, I just heard all these people complaining about parking spaces. I mean, how many parking spaces do we need for 2,000 people?
Well.
That's 2,000 attendees. That doesn't include the groups that are coming in, all of the workers.
Well, whatever, but I mean, I, I've just, I mean, someone's just telling me there's no place to park in Mount Pleasant. I'm wondering. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, that.
No park all over the streets.
I, I can't answer, I mean, how many parking spaces or whatnot. And please understand, it's not, I, I, I support the event, I support it. But we have to understand what the consequences are, intended and unintended, and be able to address them together. Because we, when you guys make a decision tonight, we walk out of here united, one, whatever the decision is. And, and you can bet that the Department of Public Safety will do everything in their power to make the event successful while serving the citizens of Mount Pleasant. And that isn't, that isn't just speak. I, I mean that. So.
I appreciate that. Commissioner Ake?
I noticed here, why, why are we not? Am I incorrect to? The parks are, parks are open, events at our parks go until what time? 11:00 PM? I think that's my understanding, right?
Till midnight.
Yeah, is it midnight or 11:00 PM? I thought.
In the parks, I think it's 11:00 PM.
I thought it was 11:00.
We've had events go till 11:00 PM.
Yeah.
So why are we not using the same guidelines for this?
Well, I, I, I think that, that.
Because if this, if this event goes up to, up till midnight, it's going to spill over into one, even up to 1:00 AM. So why are we not using the same guideline as the timeframe for events in our parks, you know, in our parks, which are also open spaces? I'm, I'm just simply curious.
Yeah, i- if the question is to me, it's, I would just say, whatever the city commission wants to do with this, their request is until midnight. That was the proposed concert time. So if the city commission wants to make the recommend or the approval of the street closure with a different set of conditions, it's, certainly it's prerogative.
Okay, thank you.
Well, when we had been, when this had been discussed at first, I was under the impression that the entire Jackie Alley would be used. But it looks like it's the street of court and part of both, a little bit of Jackie Alley and a little bit of the parking lot there for, I think, Mount Pleasant Title is in there.
Yeah.
Most of the event planning websites that I've gone to, that I've looked at outdoor event planning, how much space do you have to have? And they recommend 10, six to 10 feet per person. Which does not place with what they have there. It's not enough space. My biggest concern is not that, I mean, I don't want to shut down a party. I don't want to make it so people can't have fun. My biggest concern is safety. We're doing this on asphalt and concrete. We're doing this, yes, in the, in September, but we've had warm Septembers. There's no shade. They're going to have a couple of tents, but I worry we're taking young people with alcohol and loud music and placing them in an area that has no comfort. And I worry that this is going to end up in something that is, that is going to cause harm. Anyplace else that you see these kinds of parties, it's in a field like the J and J Ranch, like La Palooza, big park areas. And it's, it's set up that way so that people have the ability to lay down in the grass and relax themselves. They've had a little bit too much to drink, they've been jumping around, their blood pressure goes up, their heart rate goes up and they need to relax before, you know, they throw up on their front, right? I just want to make sure that these kids are going to be safe. I'm not trying to be a party pooper here, but I, this just doesn't sound like a safe environment. And it doesn't sound like there's enough space there. Commissioner Alsager?
One thing I noticed is there's definitely alcohol sales, but there's no food sales. So it'd be a nice opportunity for those food trucks that Commissioner Ronan mentioned.
Commissioner Ake?
Well, it does give us opportunity to stipulate our conditions if we are going to approve this.
Sorry, Commissioner, can you speak more into your microphone? I can't hear you.
All right. We, it gives us opportunity to stipulate our conditions if we do decide to approve this. I agree with you that, you know, we're dealing with concrete space. But then the students or the young people generally, some of them actually, you know, attend concerts, you know, are held in all sorts of spaces. And I'm going to assume that part of approving this is that they do not hold the city accountable for anything that happens to them. And, you know, if we, if we approve this, we've got to stipulate that. That under no condition can they sue the city for whatever they do, you know? And then other conditions might be really engaging in extensive outreach, you know, to the people who'd be affected by the noise to let them know that this event, this event is happening. I, I just, you know, I mean, it is summer and people are coming out of COVID and they want to, you know, celebrate life, celebrate being, being, you know, being, you know, alive. I think that, you know, we could stipulate conditions, including the timeframe, the beginning and end time for an event such as this.
Commissioner Ronan?
I know I said I was going to shut up, but I never do. You need a tomato or a hook or bring your taser phone. But, you know, I, I, we also have stadiums and things that, and I'm not arguing against, but I, I mean, these are set up for these things, right? It's not like we don't have stadiums in the community that you can, I, I'm just not sure that the current structure of downtown Mount Pleasant is a place where I bring 2,000, I don't, you know, I, I like the idea and I'm appreciative of it. If it were a smaller scale, I probably wouldn't have much difficulty with this, but it's, I don't know. I, I guess, are there other places that have done this in a small town, in the city, on, on asphalt and, you know, done it this way? I just don't know. One final thing, I know my friend, my son has friends who do this. They, they go around the country and they go to electronic dance music, EDM things. My son isn't one of them, but, but they go around all these places and he was telling me that he didn't, he, he just couldn't imagine it. But again, maybe it's an economy of scale. I mean, they're going to larger places. Right, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make a comment that Michelle gave us information that Jeff Daniels saw 1,500 people attend in the same environment.
Well, they, no, they're on Broadway and it goes all the way down. It's a much bigger area. The second thing is there's no alcohol. And it's usually, it's usually city residents and it's free and they sit in a chair. I mean, I've gone to those things. This is, this is like a, this is a much different experience, Brian.
Okay. It seems to be a similar thing to me. I haven't attended either.
Yeah, it doesn't.
But it is on asphalt, in the middle of summer.
But there's no chairs at this thing. It's just people standing. It's, it's not a relaxed environment like that. There's no alcohol. I mean, it's just a different, in the average age of the people who go to those concerts is probably, I don't know, actually.
I assume there's a different crowd.
Thirty-five, maybe, about 40.
Well, if we had a bunch of young people, we could ask them if they know who Jeff Daniels was.
Right, we could, yeah, if anybody out there, yeah.
Yeah. I think the average crowd for most of Max and Emily's concert series is probably between 35 and 55. That's a little different than the early twenties.
We often hear how the students are quote unquote bored in Mount Pleasant.
Yep.
I think this gives them a great opportunity to have something different available to them. You know, let's face it, they are the lifeblood of this town. Without Seaview, it wouldn't exist, so.
I, I'm absolutely pro-student. I'm not questioning the event. I'd love to have the event. I'd love to have the event. I'm questioning the location of it. So I'm not saying, hey, let's not do EDM concerts. What I'm saying is, is it going to be safe to take 2,000 kids, put them in that area downtown for four hours, drinking and, you know? And to be honest, it's a lot of trucking. It's just what EDM is. And I mean, I don't, you know, I'm not trying to be stereotyped or something, but it's just.
We should judge what people like.
I agree, I agree, I agree.
Would it be, would you let them have the event in a park then?
In the park, 100%. And if you could take it.
Island Park would be available, you wouldn't care?
I absolutely wouldn't care. You could use the, what's the place where they have the racetrack? What's that called?
The Mount Pleasant Racetrack Speedway?
No, isn't that like the county park or something? Yeah, no, 100%.
I don't think that's part of the, I think it's privately owned.
Oh, I have no idea. But isn't there a county playground or something? I think that'd be great. Island Park would be great. There's places on campus you could do it. That'd be great. They have huge fields. 100%, yes, let's do that. Let's sign it up.
But they do indicate here that they were, it looks like they have talked to Lieutenant Bliss, who's indicated that in addition to regular, you know, look at where it says, will the city's public safety be involved? So there's a suggestion that they have involved, you know, some public safety already because they are indicating that they will have some patrol, fire medic, you know, will be assigned to the downtown area during the event. So, you know. We are trying to get students to come to downtown. We're trying to get young people to come to downtown, to engage, you know, with the community. You know, clearly, having a party, you know, is not going to do all of that for us, but it might be a way of getting them actually to come downtown. And as I said earlier, we could stipulate some additional conditions besides what we see here.
Is there any way we could meet with the applicant and discuss some of these conditions?
Yeah, maybe the person could have contacted.
I hate to prolong this thing even further.
I don't know, I don't know.
But I would, if there's some feedback that he could answer, or he or she or they could answer.
I do believe that he's in the audience.
I believe so.
Oh, okay.
If he wants to, if he wants to come forward and we could ask him some questions. I'd appreciate that, Rich.
I'm certainly willing to help answer any questions in that. I didn't know exactly what the format is as far as when I come up or not. And that's why I was sitting in my seat, but.
Would you be willing to have it in a park, Rich?
It wouldn't work for us. I mean, the way that we'll have it permitted through Michigan Liquor Control Commission is it has to be adjoining our liquor license. So it has to touch our liquor license at some point. To do an event where you use like a special license, for instance, like the Beer Festival does or something, it has to be a nonprofit organization that puts it on and such. That's not something that I could do.
Okay.
Okay, that makes sense now.
So it will be an extension of the liquor license at the Blue Gator Encore.
So how much outreach will you do to the residential areas about this?
I mean, I feel like that's pretty open-ended, but I mean, I'm willing to do what feels expected. I mean, I don't know exactly what that might be, whether it's pamphlets that are asked of. When I met with Michelle, sponsor of the Downtown Development Director, Phil was there, Brendan Bliss was there, and some others, they had suggested like going door to door in the immediate vicinity and such. And that's something I was open to and have no problem with. But, I mean, I guess I must admit that I don't know exactly what the correct procedure would be as far as how to notify people.
You're going to have to probably do some of that because they need to know. I mean, if I woke up at 11:00 P.M. or tried, you know, lived in this neighborhood and this noise at about that time and nobody warned me that this was going to happen, I'm calling the city commission and I will be upset. So consider me as one of your resident, I don't give a here. So what would you do to make sure that I don't start howling at the city commission the next day?
I mean, I guess the first and foremost thing from our end is, I think, as Director Loria spoke about in regards to a start and an end time. This is when the event is. You know, we hope to have your, I guess, like cooperation or blessing. Our main goal is, as CMU has been deteriorating, we've seen, I mean, and our college businesses downtown, we continue to see them go down. Enrollment is down. We're trying to think of things that we can do that make it cooler, that make it like, okay, this is a good place to go to school. There is still stuff going on, even though enrollment's shrinking, there's less students here, et cetera, et cetera. Our goal is to bring in students also, the weekend was chosen. This is a home football game for Central Michigan University. It's also an away game for Michigan State University. So the hope that we can bring some East Lansing students, students from Big Rapids, students from Midland, and just kind of make it that Mount Pleasant isn't just a dead and dying place. There's some cool stuff going on here, et cetera. That's why it was, it's planned for the beginning of the semester to try to be like an outreach, remind students that downtown is a place for students. And in this, our budget on this event is about $100,000. I mean, this is a major investment that we're trying to make into a cool factor to do something downtown. Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I've certainly had beer in some beer tent or something, I remember. I don't think I drank there, but I know I was in there. In downtown, you know, I didn't inhale, I'm just saying. In Island Park before, I mean, how do they do that? I mean, you know, they've had beer tents down there before. They've sold beer, they've, I mean, I've been to other events where they sell beer.
Yes, so those are done by a nonprofit organization. So there's, and you can, what they can do is they can apply for a special license that allows them to buy and sell alcohol on that particular day. I don't know, honestly, I could be wrong on this. I don't know if they can have spirits or if they can just have beer and wine. I'm honestly not sure of the legal part on that. But I'm not a nonprofit organization, I'm a for-profit organization. We have a class C liquor license that we would use that has the ability to add space for, I think legally, we can do it up to like six days a year or something like that. We'd be doing it for one.
Yeah, my concern truly just has to do with the location. I mean, it's just not a location I would consider for an event like this. I mean, I like the idea of having an event for students. I just want it to be safe. And I'm not sure that that would happen there, to be honest. I just don't see it as a.
For us, it's an optimal location. I mean, being with the amount of investment that we're putting into this, like, the thought is, is, you know, at the very least, we get a lot of exposure. Because there's obviously no guarantee how many tickets we sell or anything like that as far as to make sure it's profitable. I mean, it's a huge risk to do a one-time event.
Sure. Lots of people do it and make a lot of money.
Yes, and a lot also go broke doing it too. We hope to be on the other side, but there's obviously no promises. But in front of our businesses, we're willing, where we are willing to take the risk. I mean, you have Broadway Street, I could use the license that I have at Midori, but it's not the image that we're going for there and such. So that's where we've chosen it. We worked with Brian Kench in regards to square footage and amount of attendees and such. And part of the 2,000 also includes the 555-person capacity that the Blue Gator Encore already have. So, you know, I think roughly where I, don't quote me on this. When I did the application, I could have told you exactly, but it's been over a month. I want to say we're around 14,000 or 15,000 square feet of extra space for this. And I want to say that with Brian and I talking about it, we were somewhere in the vicinity of 3,000 people that we could fit under code. For our purposes, the 2,000 number was what we felt comfortable on an initial effort of this.
I just wouldn't feel more comfortable if the university had their eyes on this, since you're using their student. I mean, they do it for free. I mean, it's not like, you know, it'd cost anything to have their event management people. They've had lots of events go sideways. I mean, they have a lot of experience with this. And I'm not confident about people in the city having that kind of experience. Or you, for that matter, to be honest. I mean, I just think having people who plan this type of stuff all the time, I mean, it just seems to me you'd reach out to them and.
So for what it's worth, this isn't an endeavor that I'm tackling solely on my own. You know, there's third parties involved with most of it, quite frankly. As far as security is all third-party, the staging, sound, all that is all third-party. The booking of the entertainment and handling, all of that organization, the planning of it, I mean, all, I've had third parties for all that stuff.
And I think it's great, but again, if you're saying, hey, it's good for the students and it's targeting students, I feel, as a faculty member and a member of the university, I would feel more comfortable if they were involved. I mean, you said, hey, and like I said, I reached out to her, she said she'd do the site plan for free. She'd look at it for free.
I think it's a fabulous idea. It's not something I thought of myself. I, everybody that I worked with were all for-profit companies that were willing to do it as a paid service, basically. I hadn't thought of using the university as a resource like that.
Okay, well, and I don't mean to be such a commotion, but I mean, it's going to be their students. I'd be more comfortable if.
Sure.
I'll actually get the site plans over the next week. I'll send them to you, or the assessment they did.
I will note that where we are in the planning, we've fallen behind on booking entertainment for this. So if, just being realistic, I would be willing to talk about conditions after the fact, if, you know, there's certain things on that. But we would really appreciate either an approval or denial tonight.
All right, thank you. I think that the commission's, under my understanding of what the commission is wanting, so they want everything, they want it to be successful, but they want it to be safe. And I think that you do, I think you do as well, yes. All right. Okay. Are there any more questions or comments, concerns? Is anybody willing to bring forward a motion?
I would like to make a motion for that. Do I have to repeat it? Sorry, I'm new. Yes. What's that?
I think we know what you're.
Yeah, the motion is to approve the conditional closure?
Yes. Thank you.
And there's a second?
I'll second that.
All right. We have a second by the vice mayor. We have a motion by Commissioner Osmond. Are there any more, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries. All right, we are going to move on to item 17. Each year, the city applies for, or twice a year, they apply for the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe 2% allocation. The city prepares a list of items that would benefit from this funding. The city commission is asked to choose their top five. I will give my top five and then I will call on each city commissioner in order, okay? My top five is the M20 pedestrian bridge replacement, the public, or the police department interview room recording equipment, airport operational funding, the grit system upgrade, and the storm sewer improvements. Commissioner Allsager. What are your top five?
My top five matched yours exactly. It includes the four critical elements that were identified and then one that was noted as a high priority.
Commissioner Ake.
I have similar, yeah, I have the bridge, the recording, the interview room critical, interview room recording, the airport operational funding, grit system, and I actually do have the website redesigned for ADE accessibility. I think that's where we differ.
Okay. Commissioner Osmond?
I'm very similar. I had both, now, when you said storm sewer, does it include both of them, the extension and the improvement?
No.
Okay. So I had both of those.
Okay.
As well as the bridge, the grit system, and the police department interview recording equipment.
Okay. Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, I have the pedestrian bridge, both of the storm sewers, the airports, and the police recording equipment, police room recording equipment.
Yes. Vice Mayor Simon?
I have the pedestrian bridge replacement, website redesign, meter reading equipment upgrade, and storm sewer improvements.
All right. Clerk Falk, did you get all of those?
I did, thank you very much.
Excellent. All right. We're going to move on to item 18 on the agenda. This is to consider amendments to the purchasing policy. Manager DeSens, please give the commission an overview.
Thank you, Mayor. So the city hasn't done a major overhaul of our purchasing policy since 2001. We've done some adjustments here and there as we've gone along. We offer tonight an overhaul of the purchasing policy after we took a review of it this past year here. So the goal is to streamline the purchasing process while also keeping in place the necessary controls within the organization for purchasing. So the modifications to the overall purchasing policy include a rule against serial purchasing, which would be used to essentially avoid purchasing under the policy maximums, increasing the purchase threshold for sealed bids from 20,000 to 25,000 to account for inflation over in time, and to just make sure that we're continuing to deal with the volumes internally rather than bringing so many purchases to the city commission. Increases the petty cash transaction maximums from $50 to $100. Changes the requirements that bids must be published in the newspaper and instead allows for more discretion based on the best route to advertise. Right now, we're just noticing we get most of our traffic from a couple of online sources, so. And then also increases the local and in-state preferences to $2,500. So we're asking the city commission to approve the revised purchase policy.
All right, are there, does the commissioners have any questions or comments? Commissioner Allsager.
This all seems to make a lot of sense to me. I will be supporting this.
Anyone else? All right, do we have a motion on the floor?
I'd make a motion for that.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve the purchasing policy amendments?
I second.
We have a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? All right, now we're moving on to item 19. This is to consider setting a public hearing for April 11th, 2022, on the changes to the medical marijuana facility ordinance. Manager DeSens, please give the commission an overview.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So this item, the change to the medical marijuana facilities, comes after the discussion that took place on our February 14th meeting. Initially, at that meeting, the city commission was presented with some requests from staff just to make some administrative modifications to stay current with state law. But also, the city commission wishes to look at an ordinance for reciprocity, essentially allowing it, in this case, for item 19, medical marijuana facilities, to also have a retail facility or an adult-use license of essentially the same equal. So that's exactly what this ordinance does, would make those, make those changes to the ordinance that staff had requested, and also allow the reciprocity. Approval of this item will then set a public hearing for that ordinance on April 11th.
Okay, does the commission have any questions or concerns?
I have a question.
Commissioner Osmond?
So if we vote yes, we're saying that we want to have a public hearing regarding this matter?
Yes.
If we vote no?
We don't want a public hearing.
Pretty self-explanatory, thanks. Just wanted to be clear.
And with voting yes for the public hearing, we're saying that we are, that the, what the staff has done is what we have asked them to do, basically. And then we're bringing it to the public at our next meeting, for them to give their understanding of it. And then we'll vote yes or no at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other comments?
I have a question.
Commissioner Ake?
Are we engaging in any discussion of this item today? Or just simply voting without discussion?
We can engage in discussion on this item.
The reason why I'm asking is because it seems to me that we may need to have a robust discussion of this. And I don't know, in the interest of time, I'm looking at what we have.
And I don't know, in the interest of time, I'm looking at what we have here, whether we will be able to have.
Commissioner Ake, can you lean into your microphone?
I should probably just swallow the microphone. That way, when I speak, you'll hear it. Okay, sorry. I am, I apologize. I say this because it seems to me that this item, and that's the one after it, 20, would require some robust conversation, at least some conversation. And I'm looking at what we have there and also the interest of time, whether, you know, we will have enough time to have the kind of needed conversation we want to have to then vote on this. That's why I posed the question.
Well, at this time, we are looking at setting a public hearing for this. When we have a public hearing, we invite the public to come in, give their comments and concerns. We close the public hearing, and then we have discussion. And then we decide whether or not we're going to move forward with it, if we're going to make changes with it.
Okay.
And we have all the time in the world.
Good.
I'm really tired, though.
That's why I asked.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right, do we have a motion for setting the public hearing for April 11, 2022?
I move.
All right, any second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk Falk, do I need a roll call? No, okay.
Not to stop the hearing.
Not to stop the hearing, all right. Commissioner Alsager?
Are we doing this motion just for number 19 and we'll repeat it for number 20?
Yes, we will.
All right, I understand.
Any other discussion on this? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no?
No.
We're going to move on to item 20 in the agenda. This is to consider setting a public hearing for April 11, 2022, on the changes to the adult-use establishments ordinance. Manager Dissents, please give us the commission an overview.
Thank you, Mayor. So this mirrors essentially the last piece of business on your agenda. So instead of the medical marijuana facilities, this addresses adult marijuana, adult-use marijuana facilities. So it has the same administrative changes that we discussed in the last proposed ordinance, as well as would allow adult-use marijuana establishments to have a similar medical use license to that establishment as well, too. Approval of this item would set a public hearing for this ordinance on April 11.
Does the commission have any questions or comments? We have a motion to set a public hearing for April 11, 2022.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no?
No.
All right, now we are at item 21 on the agenda. This is to consider appointment recommendations by the Appointments Committee for the Isabella County Material Recovery Facility Board and the Mount Pleasant Zoning Board of Appeals. Commissioner Alsager, can you fill us, fill in the commission on these appointment recommendations?
I have to flip a few more pages here. And we have two appointments that we're bringing to you tonight. One is for Matt Weaver to participate on the material facility governing board. And then the second one is for David McGuire on the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Do the commissioners have any questions or comments?
I guess just a quick background on the two individuals. I was curious.
I'm not sure about the first one. The second one, I know he was the only applicant.
Okay.
Does anybody have any, any other comments on this?
George failed his job.
George failed?
No, I could certainly tell you.
Okay, I'm just kidding.
I, you know, he's, he's been on the commission before, many times. He certainly has served on many boards.
I was just curious.
He's a businessman in the city. He, you know.
You guys ran me through the wringer, so I figured I'd ask.
Are there any other questions or comments? Is there a motion for approval for the recommendations by the Appointments Committee?
Yes.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? Motion carries. Like to welcome Matt Weaver and David McGuire to the city boards. We are now at item 22 of the agenda. This is to consider the recommendation from the Planning Commission to reappoint Corey Friedrich as the representative, representative of the Planning Commission for the Zoning Board of Appeals. Commissioner Alsager?
Since we have numerous vacancies on that zoning board of appeals, I think it's especially important that we don't block that other effort to have the crossover member. I'll be supporting this tonight.
Okay. Any, any other questions or comments?
Some background information?
Background?
It's real traditional that someone who's on the Planning Commission sits in on the Zoning Board of Appeals meetings, and Corey Friedrich's been doing that.
Yeah. Okay.
Again, someone who's had a long-term, long history of serving on commissions and boards within the city of Mount Pleasant certainly has extensive background.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Is there a motion for approval of the recommendation of this appointment?
I move.
Is there a second? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no? All right, at this time, we come to announcements on city-related issues and new business. Do any commissioners wish to make an announcement or bring up new business they would like to bring to the city manager or staff?
Can we just make a comment?
Yep.
Is that okay? Yes? Mm-hmm. Okay, so actually, Director Loria thanked all of us for supporting him in selecting the social crisis advocate, Krista Carabeli, but he forgot himself. And I do think that, you know, we, I want to thank him, not only as a resident of Mount Pleasant, but also as a commissioner for really having the courage and vision to initiate this work. It is needed, it is important. We've been talking about the need to have somebody who can address, you know, who can, who is present when we, we have a person experiencing mental health crisis or where a mental health advocate or someone with expertise in that area is present to help de-escalate all sorts of conditions. And it seems to me that this is the right way to go. And I hope that we serve as a model community for this particular project. If, you know, we'll give it one year and hopefully give it a few more years. Yeah, because we're dealing with the lives of people, the lives of people, and the security of our community. So I want to thank you really tremendously for doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to state right now? I'd like to remind the residents that there are ways that you can get involved. The city webpage, www.mt-pleasant.org, under Boards and Commissions tab, you will find a list of volunteer boards and commissions that help run our city. If you find something that you're interested in, please submit an application. Commissioner Alsager, Vice Mayor Simon, and Commissioner Ronan would be more than willing to help anyone interested in applying. Many hands make light work, and many minds bring great ideas. And we'd love to have you be part of this. Anyone else have anything else they'd like to state? All right, then at this time, I'm going to open the floor for public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. Have we received any emails for public comment?
No, we have not.
All right. If you wish to comment, please step up to the podium, state your name and address before you make your comment. If you're joining the meeting by Zoom, use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining the Zoom by phone. Once you're recognized, you'll be moved in so that you can be heard and make your comment. Please state your name and address before your comment. You will have five minutes. Do we have anybody in the land of Zoom wishing to make a comment?
No raised hands.
Thank you. Is there anybody out in the audience?
This is going to be short. I would just, as a business owner and my son, as a resident, like to see the lawyer, Jacob, be available to tell us his thoughts and how he brought all this together. I think that would be really good to hear from him. Liz, hopefully, will be back to do that. But I just think to have a nice panel for a vigorous discussion. I know it is, it's a big deal. It is. And I appreciate that you are opening it to the public, but I do think the players need to be available, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment?
I'll be very quick as well, because I'm sure everybody wants to go home. But I do appreciate the commissioners that have voted on our public hearing on April 11. Thank you very much. At least give it an opportunity. And from the bottom of my heart, I do appreciate moving forward with that and seeing what happens from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to come forward to make a comment? At this time, I'm going to close the public comment. We do not have a closed session for this meeting, but we do have a work session tonight. The work session discussion will include the recent attendance to the Michigan Municipal League's Capcom by myself, Commissioner Alsager, Commissioner Ake, Commissioner Ronan, and City Manager Dissents. We'll be presenting what we learned at the various breakout sessions. At this time, we are going to take an eight-minute break, because that would make us start at 9:30. So we'll take an eight-minute break, and then we'll come back for our work session. Thank you. Thank you.
It just keeps going. Just keeps going.
Can't stop, won't stop.
Just keeps going.
Keeps going. All right. We are back for our work session. And the first person to present is going to be Commissioner Allsager.
Wow, thank you. I decided to stand up here so I can see what you're seeing.
Okay.
All right, so that's the dates. And I was fortunate. I got to attend one session on Tuesday and then the two on Wednesday that we all got to go to. The Michigan Water Navigator Workshop was kind of exciting because it was being launched that website that day. And everyone that was presenting was really excited about it. And then the second day, it was all about different funding sources. The first one, the moderator was from Michigan Municipal League, and this was kind of her expertise area. So really, along with the two presenters, this Eric Pocan and Katie Hansen, we had a real good panel of three people. They commented that most communities have very aging infrastructure and that we all have needs for updating and repair. And that's something that we're addressing. So we're doing well with that. So this is again promoting their Michigan Water Navigator. And one of the things they really promoted was that it has a help desk. So you can actually ask questions and get some more knowledge that way. There's help if you need to get lead and copper compliant. And I don't know if that's in our wheelhouse or not. The USDA Rural Development is a good source for the federal loan aspect of it with both grants and loans. And again, Grace Carey is our contact for that. And then this Eric Pocan, oh my gosh, he was a rock star. The different websites he was telling us about, since he works for the state government. The Clean Water State Revolving Fund is the first one. And then the second one is the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. And those are different funding sources. And then it was kind of a sad thing to hear that they have so many requests for help with PFAS contaminants that they know they can't respond to all the different requests for that kind of help. This Katie Hansen has worked nationally. She's, she was really well spoken. We got to break up into groups and she came to our table. I was, I was like a teenager, just like, oh, we have this big expert helping us out here. She's involved with different national products and national projects, including some in Ohio and New Jersey. And then they asked these questions. You know, do we have legacy contaminants? You know, possibly we do with PFAS. Do we have aging infrastructure? Yes, we do. And then I'm not aware of us having a deal with any invasive species, but some of the areas she was talking about really have that as an issue. And then the general answers that we got were, well, it's good if you're considered redevelopment-ready. And I didn't know the answer if we have ever received any state revolving funds. So that's good to know. And then they ask always about private funding. And then I heard more about that the second day. And then if we had gotten any relief from having low census numbers. And it seemed like we just did for that, too. So I thought, well, good. We know at least the yeses on some of those answers there. The MML, I'm going to read this one because it isn't very readable. But they reminded us of their Serve My City. That's how you read that. Serve My City, that's on their website. And that is another good way to get your questions answered. And they do want to help us, you know, get funding. And then michigond roadmap.com is another good source. And that's more for learning about the American Rescue Plan funding. And then this was from my next session on Wednesday. And John Lamachia, he's actually their lobbyist, but he's really, really well spoken. And we heard him at various other sessions as well. So he did have three experts, but he was the one asking the questions. And it was one of those cases where you figured he already knew the answer before he asked the question. And those were the three experts. When I write on this in the next few slides, I'm calling them by their first names. So you can hear me talk about Eric, Zach, and Tim. But they were all really knowledgeable in their topic areas there. Eric's expertise is in broadband and connectivity. I listened and I thought, oh, okay. So it can be fiber optics or wireless. That makes sense to me. And then he started talking about speeds and 25 megabytes per second or 120-something for cable speeds. So, you know, obviously I learned some of what I needed to learn. One thing that was really interesting to all of us was that the FCC in the past had been asked to create a broadband map. And if they got like one hit on a map from one household in a neighborhood, they were able to claim that that whole area was serviced. So it was a really inefficient model. So now they're doing it at a much better level to get every address to be able to be connected. And this was something else I learned, that the Infrastructure and Jobs Act is like a second arm and separate from the American Rescue Plan. It's not separate and equal, but separate. And they then have another organization, this BEAD, Broadband Equity Access and Deployment, that they give funding to. So out of their $65 billion allotment, this BEAD gets 48-point-something billion of it to administer it. So it's nice to know that there's already these organizations in place to be able to process some of the big money that's coming through. And then there's another website from the National Telecommunications and Information Administration that can give you information about grants. And then unfortunately, the money isn't as available as quickly as we hope it will be, but it will be available. And then the other, the next expert, Zach, and he was kind of a doomsday-sayer in a way that he says, well, sure, we need infrastructure help, but we need $10 trillion and we're only going to get 1.4 billion. So we're not going to get anything, what we need nationally. And so these were some of the specific ones he talked about, that there is money for roads, rail, ferries, and ports. And not that it all comes at once, but part of a five-year appropriation. And this one, since I've learned that we do have census-related help, that I don't know if any of our census-related help is, I don't know if ours is from the state or from the federal government. But we're getting help and I'm not sure where it's from. And then the third expert was Tim Dempsey. And he is involved with the Michigan Municipal League. And he said from the Serve My City that I found it interesting that most of their requests for information was from counties rather than cities and villages. I just found that interesting. And then really promoted the need for partnerships and that we should start to control the narrative that people think that we are getting all this money and it's all that we need. But that's not really true, that we are getting money, but we still have some shortfalls of money that we're traditionally not getting from the state. And this is the last session I went to. And it was kind of a nice one, too, where the moderator was as knowledgeable as the panelists. And they were all from different entities. So they made sure that we knew that you can have all these accredited investors, but you can have non-accredited ones, such as those of us citizens that might want to give, you know, some of our dollars. And they were really pushing.
Sort of like what Green Tree did.
Yes. Yeah, Green Tree is a real good example of that. One of the other speakers spoke quite a bit about crowdfunding. Sure, in 2012, they had some success. But in 2016, it's like it blew up and that they had all these industries and jobs and money raised. It was really incredible to hear that. And then he mentioned a certain banking entity, Honeycomb Credit, and was very proud to say that about half of the businesses they supported were female-owned businesses and just about a quarter were minority-owned. So that was inspiring to hear. And then, of course, they say, you know, it's not all just top-down money that you have to reach down and get your community involved. So that's what I meant by reaching down. And this is still the moderator, Chris, talking. And he says, you have to educate and you have to convene meetings. You have to get leverage and get people to donate their money and then lead and build trust. It was a good, inspiring model. And then Suzanne was one of the experts, and she talked a lot about crowdfunding models. And years ago, I was approached by someone who said, Mary, you should invest in 100 women who care. And I can't even remember at the time if she said, you would donate $100 or you would donate $1,000. And at the time, all I did was kind of nod my head and say, oh, that's interesting. But I don't think it ever really got off the ground in Mount Pleasant. I don't know if anyone else has heard about it. Did you ever hear about that?
Yeah, they are in Alma, in Grashut.
In Grashut, they have it?
Yeah, because I've worked with them. Well, then I have intersected with them.
Okay.
For human trafficking.
Very good. And then the second one there, Public Spaces and Community Places. I'm going to mention that again in a minute because that is somewhat that I think we can be impacted. And then they talked about reward-based, such as different Kickstarter's. And my daughter got involved in one of those where she gave some money early on to some people that wanted to create these special puzzles. So she got these three puzzles at a, you know, like at a discounted price. And they're like the best puzzles ever. They are. Some of the puzzles have a, you know, the usual puzzle shapes, the ins and outs. But then they didn't have square corners. They had round edges. So when you were done with it, you spun the puzzle around and it was a different picture. It was so cool. And that was a Kickstarter campaign. And then you're used to having loyalty cards from various businesses. So that's a form of money that they get up from. And then zero interest loans and investor returns. That's the Green Tree example right there. And then the next expert was again talking about the GoFundMe and crowdfunded things, Uber and Lyft, like a rideshare co-op. And she was familiar with it from various restaurants, breweries, wineries, and distilleries. And then she had a good example that Ben &amp; Jerry's did it, too. And they tell us, lose the barriers. Don't just try to get the big investors, but get us non-accredited investors so that we can give up to that $2,500. And then the specific example they gave, this Kate Redmond, she's involved in a new building in Traverse City that's a cooperative building that's going to be like the Green Tree project, but with more retail establishments. And it's not finished being built yet, but they're on their way and they have a lot of local support for it. So that was really exciting to hear. And then I hadn't heard about this House Bill 4116. I don't know the status of it at all, but it's an incentive for Michiganders to invest in Michigan businesses and then perhaps get even a tax credit for it. So that's kind of exciting. And then here's the part that, it was right at the end of the session and it was like my best news all day during the question and answer. I got to ask about our recreation authority that we have to try to get an aquatic center. And, you know, what kind of funding ideas could we get from that? So first off, this Chris, the moderator, said, oh, you did so well just to get a rec authority. And then they advised, you know, do some of the minor fundraising and then perhaps we could get a grant from the Public Spaces, Community Places, that give grants up to $52,000. Their examples were $50,000 grants from a couple groups. And one of the people on the committee that I know is like the fundraising arm of it, they feel like on our rec authority, like they need to commission a new study and they need to educate the public about what they're doing. So that does take some money. So that's why I thought that was appropriate to ask that question about maybe getting funding. Bingo, done. It was good stuff.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
Maureen, are you going to go next?
Sure.
Looks like you're the money girl.
That was a good exercise for you to do.
Right, summarize it.
I didn't want to punish you by sending you about seven or eight pages of documents here, so, you know. But anyway, so, okay, Mary, you're hard to follow, but I will try. So I, the first session that I went to um was one that dealt with emergency management overview. And I thought, you know, I wanted to go to it because it is important to me and I'm new to this. So I was thinking about, especially after, I think it was the two thousand and eighteen flooding or two thousand and seventeen?
The seventeen.
Seventeen flooding, yeah. And I kept, and also CMU, and I kept thinking of what we might do in cases like that. One of the things that I um I got out of this, well, I got several things from this. One, at, at the very beginning, they emphasized that every city, every city that is ten thousand or more must designate an emergency management plan, and I hope that we have one. I'm going to assume that we have one. Um, and that, you know, if we're over ten thousand, we must have a support plan. And so they said, you know, that um, then they went on to talk about um having an emergency operations center. Do we have an emergency operations center? Okay, Director Laurie, I thought about you all through this particular session. I swear to God, that's what I did. So, so, and then they talked about a hazard mitigation plan, which has to be approved by state and FEMA. Yes, do we have a hazard mi-? Okay, excellent, excellent. Um, i- in case of an emergency, we do need to declare an emergency ASAP, more like right away, have a plan. Uh, we need to, um, and then uh the person who presented, and I keep, I forget his name, I didn't write down his name because I was busy typing up. Um, he said, um, in um, in the case of mass violence, that we need to have specific res- uh response and recovery overview. And hopefully, and he, in fact, this person was involved in the Oxford shooting, and he talked about that. Um, and he emphasized that the first twenty-four hours in a case of mass shooting or mass violence is absolutely, absolutely important. I'm assuming that's part of our protocol, right? I'm looking at you because you're the person who's probably going to have to do that. Okay, um. Okay, but he al- uh, he also talked about um uh, the fact that even as people who, you know, um, emergency management managers, that it is important to do a sort of self-care after, you know, after, after this. And he described his own experience, really, you know, that he did things like picking up, yeah, sort of directing, even showing people how to go to the, where to go to the party, where the party was. He said, "Everything at that moment is important, even if we don't think that it is important, because it's a huge crisis moment," right? So they talked about NIMS, the acronym. I don't like acronyms, just so everybody knows that. But NIMS, you know, which is the National Incident Management System. And, and I really don't like acronyms. You've got to spell them out and then indicate the acronym after that. So he says, you know, that all levels of government have to adopt NIMS to receive federal funds. Do we have NIMS? Have we adopted it? It is mandatory. Whether you like it or not, you need to do it. So, so, all right, okay. Um, he also said that, you know, if we're doing this, he recommends that everybody be trained, especially the staff, the people at the top, you know, who are close to, you know, um, at the top level, the staff. Um, he said, you know, that you could also get certification or credit, you know, if you do the training. And then he recommended that we exercise and practice NIMS at city events, you know, sort of, I guess it's like fire drills, you know? Okay. All right, okay, okay, okay. All right, so. So, uh, for the post-event assessment, he said, uh, the elected officials need to be part of the post-event assessment. Uh, and he asked if we utilize a unified incident command. Do we utilize a unified incident command? Yes. Do we have mutual agreements with, you know, uh, um, organizations around us? Red Cross Shelter. Do we have a Red Cross Shelter here in town?
I, we used to.
Uh-huh, gotcha. All right, so now we need to-
Maybe we do, I don't, I'm not, I don't know.
I think, I think they moved out.
I stopped, I kept going. I don't know where the Red Cross Shelter is. Where is it?
We don't have a Red Cross office anymore.
We don't? Yeah, we used to have one, didn't we?
Yeah, we used to have a Red Cross.
All right, um, do we have a municipality support plan? Yeah? Okay, all right, okay. So. And then, and then he also asked, you know, that he's, he suggested that we find out if we have a reunification plan. Okay, so if we have to evacuate people, is there a secure place to meet after the disaster? That's really basically what it is, you know?
Good to have that at the individual level.
Yeah, individual level, but also munif- municipality level, you know, he was, you know, he was saying we need to pay attention to that. Okay, but he also emphasized that, um, you know, in terms of uh, uh disaster management, that it is important to be responsive. This is the time that we do a lot of listening. Whether we like it or not, he says, "Listening, this is that you have to go into listening mode because it is absolutely, absolutely important." But he also emphasized the need to work as a team. So this is not the moment when you're trying to outshine somebody else. Everybody has to work in tandem, all these units, all these organizations have to work together. We listen, we listen to one another, we listen to the people also who are experiencing the crisis. Okay.
Our staff's in a good place.
I don't know, I'm new.
I used to serve on the university.
Right, I am new. Just, um, you said, "What did we gain from this?" I'm telling you what I got. Would you, should I continue?
Yes, please.
Okay, ordinances. So I went to the, the session on ordinances because I really am interested in looking at some of our ordinances. If, you know, um Manager DeSens remembers, one of the first questions I asked you was about how to do with ordinances when I first met you, yeah. So I kept saying, "Yeah, it would be important to look at our ordinances, to see what ordinances need to be updated or worked and all of that." Okay, and so I went to this one that deals with ordinances. I am particularly, at, for me, at, um, you know, in terms of, you know, you all know it, so I'm not going to repeat it. He sort of said to us that looking at ordinances, we have to look at it in terms of, you know, hierarchy, structural hierarchy from the constitution, state laws, local charter, and then our ordinances, you know, which ones trump, you know, the other. Okay, so you know that. Um, and so maybe this is just primarily because I am interested in particular ordinances, you know, that I don't see. I don't know whether we have them, but I want to find out whether, whether we have them, especially because of the emphasis that ordinances serve a public purpose. Okay, so, um, in this case, therefore, I'm particularly interested in ordinances that deal with equity in the workplace, diversity, equity, and inclusion. I don't know that we have those ordinances. Um, and ordinance that might address our relationship with First Nations, in this case Indigenous people. I do know that we don't have a land acknowledgement statement when we begin our meetings. I'm going to say, "We need to do that," because those are notes that I have for myself. So it may be that, you know, these are not important for everybody, but they are important to me. And that's why I'm saying this. And chances are, you know, ordinances, I don't work with ordinances all the time. I'm new to this. These are things that I think we really should consider if we are going to be very representative and inclusive community. Okay, lay my cards out there on the table. All right, so in this case, therefore, um, you know, um, so bear in mind, as he said, that ordinances, you know, must have public purpose and must be lawful. They have to be consistent with federal and state laws, you already know that. Cannot discriminate, uh, they cannot permit what the state forbids. So now we're thinking, I was thinking about opening up an ordinance that has to do with the marijuana issue that we're talking about. Item nineteen and, items nineteen and twenty coming up because there are ordinances involved. Okay, and actually I did go to a session dealing with that. They have to be consistent with local charter. So I don't know what the charter is, local charter is, you know, dealing with those issues. Um, okay, so the other thing that this session talked about is a cost recovery ordinance. Do we have one? Where, uh, he said, you know, they said we should check Michigan Collective Law, MCL seven sixty-nine, that it au- authorizes our community to have a cost recovery ordinance, in which case if somebody sues us and we go to trial and, 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 you know, and we win the case, that we do have the right to sort of say, "Hey, you're paying us for, for all the money we spent."
Is that your phone?
It's telling me it's time to go to bed.
Well, then.
I am not. It's my phone. All right, so I've turned it off. All right, so do we have a cost recovery ordinance? Just, so maybe we should look at that. Well, in light of potential lawsuits of all kinds, right? Hmm, so, um. Okay. Yeah, and so I also thought about an ordinance that has to do with uh, street closure, you know, like the one we just had, you know? Uh, do we have ordinances that address street closure or even closure of particular areas? I don't know. So, and so maybe those are things that we can't think about. Uh, I think you covered the general session one that dealt with crowdfunding, so I'm not going to cover that. The session that I went to on, on the second day has to do with the latest on marijuana law. Uh, it turns out that the person who presented happens to be somebody who is also addressing a case. Laura Genovich.
Yep, from that law firm.
Hmm?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. She actually used her case as an example. I'm like, "Ah, you're supposed to talk about this publicly?" So. So, um, so what I learned, I really learned a lot about this. Um, you know, the, for the medical marijuana ordinance, uh, which, um, she says, um, uh, in terms of the facilities, the statute does not define the process. Um, but, you know, it can be first-served lottery or scoring system. And she said that created a lot of confusion, a lot of problems too, because people then, you know, people who didn't when the, um, the new, the Adult Use Marijuana, um, um, Act was passed, it sort of caused confusion because the other one in, in the statute, because it was so vague in terms of what you can do, and then this one happened, sort of threw that one out of whack. People went, you know, people started complaining because now they realized, "Oh, who wants the adult-use one?" Because now the medical, medical use marijuana is kind of almost dying. But she said that, that, that there are, um, there is some conversation about merging the two, so we don't know. So she says, "In this case, you know, uh, ways of getting, getting at this would be through zoning ordinances," right? And she gave examples saying that a zoning ordinance can do a number of times, it can limit marijuana establishments to certain zoning districts, and we talked about that on our way back. In which case, okay, we can say, "Well, we don't want it south of Mount Pleasant or east of Mount Pleasant, only in this particular area." Uh, we can dictate minimum lot sizes. She said, you know, "Do you, it, you know, does just do that or prohibit marijuana establishments within certain distances? I see that ours say we can't go to." You know, and she says, "The state's limit is a thousand feet, um, of free existing K through twelve schools and all that." But she says that the municipality can change it actually, so long as we make sure that this is part of what we indicate in our ordinance. So we're talking, you know, I was thinking, "Oh, well, in that case, we could say, 'Well, nothing near any residential areas.'" You know, I don't know. Um, and then she said, "We should, um..." She said, you know, uh, what was what I found interesting about this session, you know, I don't want to go through all the other things she pointed out because you already know this, I'm going to assume that. She said, "What they have found interesting i- is, you know, uh, when it comes to the kind of litigation that they're experiencing." And she says, "The litigation that most of their litigation have involved selective scoring systems, which is what was used for the, you know, medical, I'm, you know, selective scoring systems, where disappointed applicants often alleged that the municipality unfairly applied its own selective rules or that the rules are defective and unconstitutional because they favored some applicants over others." And I kept thinking, "I think I heard this." This, this sounds like us.
Couple years.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So because, no, seriously, she said, "This is the majority of the cases." Um, and so, so she, you know, so we're saying, "Well, how do you avoid litigation? What do you do?" She said, "Well, you know, one way of doing that would um include implementing other types of regulatory schemes, such as, you know, say for medical marijuana, lotteries of first-come, first-served, or zoning-only regulations, in which case just sort of restrict that." Um, or then she also said, "Well, I'll just simply open it up and don't, you know, place a limit and let the market take care of it for you." So, um, and she had several cases, and, you know, the cases included us, Traverse City, and a number of other cities that I didn't write down. So this is it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Manager DeSens, do you have something to share with us?
Yeah, would it be all right if I just go ahead and do it for you? Perfect, thank you very much. So, um, Maureen already covered, uh, the emergency management session. Yeah, we were in the same session, yeah, I was hanging out in the back next to the bagels, so.
Cool.
Um, so I won't go over that one again, uh, but I did, uh, attend the, uh, charging, uh, climate energy, uh, kind of preparing the community for, uh, vehicle electrification. So this, uh, presentation was done by Corey Conley, who's an energy advisor for Eagle, as well as Brandy Brown, who works in energy services at Walker Miller Energy. So essentially, the idea was just kind of like sparking the question, "Is your community ready for electrification?" And how you kind of view that, um, the idea, of course, being the infrastructure that would be required for electric vehicles. Uh, by twenty fifty, they anticipate about one in every three vehicles will be one hundred percent electric vehicles. So what are we doing to prepare for that sort of thing? So they talk about just a few very basic things. One is updating building code to include electrification readiness for new construction, because of course people who have these vehicles will need them in their homes and be able to charge, so. Um, uh, they also discussed kind of the barrier to entry in, um, some poorer communities and, and being conscious of that because, you know, the retrofitting for this can, you know, cost about five thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, depending on the vehicle, depending on the charging station needed. So that's a very significant, um, investment. So it's just about being aware of those sort of things and what the community can do to encourage, um, uh, the, um, required infrastructure in those homes, so. They also talked about, um, uh, let me see, discussion on state plans to have greater access to charging across the state for travel. So essentially, the state's looking at, you know, its roadmap and saying, "Okay, if someone wants to get from, let's say, uh, Marquette down to Detroit and they're in an electric vehicle, where, where are they going? Because they're going to have to stop, they're going to have to get charged up, those kind of things." So the state's looking at that, and then they're using some of their ARP funds to put in place, uh, the necessary charging stations so people can get across the state. Um, and then, uh, let's see.
Did they happen to talk about, um, the cleaning up of accidents involving electric vehicles?
They did not, no, this was in particular about, um, you know, more encouragement and, and more what we can do to get more electric vehicles on the road. That was about it, um, I engaged them in a conversation about just the future of that, because I'm always kind of thinking, okay, what's even further out? I know that Tesla had originally modeled its company on the idea that you wouldn't be so much, drive up, park my car for twenty, thirty minutes, charge it, and then I've gotta figure out something to do while I'm there, and, and, you know, that's one of the things they had talked about, when you put some of these charging stations in your community, be very conscious that you're putting them in areas where, all right, you got someone who's, you got a captive audience for twenty to thirty minutes, what can you do, so you know what a downtown, uh, setting is a good place for it? That way, they get charged up, they can go to restaurant shops, those kind of things. Uh, my question is, like, if Tesla, uh, their initial model was, you wouldn't just go and you wouldn't just plug in your battery, but it would be, you would go to a battery swap station, you would swap your battery for a fully charged vehicle, or a fully charged battery, boom, you're right back on the road, which makes sense, especially if in the future, one in three cars is an electric vehicle, you don't really wanna be stopping every hour of your trip to have to, you know, sit for twenty, thirty minutes. So that's the eventual thing, their thoughts on that are, though, that the infrastructure is still required for individual homes, and the infrastructure for these charging stations could serve as kind of the foundation for those battery swap stations. So there's a bit of a, a potential for a future retrofit there. Um, and then, other than that, I also did the Green Communities Session, which was late in the day on, uh, Wednesday. Now, I didn't get the name of all of the presenters there, unfortunately, they didn't have a list on the website, so I couldn't go back and cheat, unfortunately, so. Uh, there were three presenters, uh, in all, one was from Eagle, they had discussed, uh, their work, uh, working with the MML, and there was an MML presenter there as well too, on the Michigan Green Communities Program, it's a program I have some familiarity with, but essentially, it certifies municipalities for steps taken to reduce negative environmental impact. So you can get a bronze, silver, or, um, gold, uh, certification essentially, and they have a whole list of different things that you could do. So for instance, the city has already undergone an energy audit. We've already swapped out most of the lights at, um, many of our facilities here for LED. So those are two things that you essentially put the check in the box, you get a number of points for these things. And then if you get enough points, um, you get the certification, that's a certificate just showing that you're committed to green energy in your community. There were some updates that were made in twenty twenty-one, so now there are DEI components of it as well too. So that's been folded into the program. Um, and there's also a networking program that's, uh, been built into it. So there's kind of a forum where communities can come together and talk about their green initiatives as well in exchange with other communities, other commissioners, city managers, et cetera. So, uh, that's pretty much a rundown on, on the different sessions that I attended, so.
Thank you. You stuck to our time schedule too.
Yeah, I had set a time schedule, but doesn't matter.
We're good.
I always do, yeah.
I had to go for ten minutes, and I was worried that I went over ten minutes, so.
I didn't worry about it.
Nobody cut your mic. Well, it's now Commissioner Ronan's turn.
Do I have slides up there?
Yes.
Great, let me just, I'm gonna go quick, but I talk, I, I didn't do what you did. So, I mean, I went to a bunch of, you know, there was a lot on housing affordability that I went to, but what I did was most of it.
Oh, good, wait, you just, you're not at a mic.
Uh, do I have to be?
We are still being recorded.
We're being recorded.
So, I didn't do what other people did, so I, I just took the information I got and interpreted it to stuff that might be relevant for us, okay? The two sessions I went to were Housing Michigan with new legislation, and it's easier than you think, a paradigm shift for increasing housing supply. There were several other additional sessions I went to that focused on, um, stuff the commission and, and already has dealt with. Um, plus, uh, focused a little bit on the housing thing we're gonna be discussing. So I won't take much time, because we're gonna do a deep dive on this, this was just a brief introduction. Um, I assume I pushed this button, yeah, there you go. Uh, and again, this is the context, right, the number of students enrolled, and you hear me rant about this. Um, it's actually since nineteen seventy-five was the last time we had the number of students we have enrolled at CMU that we have now, right? So, um, if you're thinking this is a small drop, or it's just something that's happening, it's absolutely not true, right? Uh, homeownership in nineteen eighty was about forty perc- forty-three percent, in nineteen seventy in Mount Pleasant, in nineteen seventy-five, it was about fifty percent. Homeownership now is about thirty-four percent. Highest owner homeownership in the past seventy years was about fifty, in nineteen fifty-one, it was about fifty-seven percent for Mount Pleasant. That's significantly below what we're gonna be talking about, right? Our whole, how, our whole housing ownership is significantly below. Um, counties with colleges, including Mount Pleasant, report a lower number of two-bedroom apartments, but Isabella County isn't any particular hazard for that. We've got minus sixteen percent of our housing structure that has cost eighteen hundred per month. Grasha County has ten, Kalamazoo has sixteen, Macosta has thirteen, and Washtenaw has forty. The reason why I chose these counties is, they have, Grashit I chose because it's our neighbor, right? And they have Alma College, but all the other ones have MSU, uh, excuse me, University, not that green thing. Uh, they have University of Michigan, or Western Michigan University, or Ferris State University, so they're comparable in that way. I realize that they're not the same. So we're not seeing a lot of difference there, the argument that we need to focus on missing middle housing, I think, is false. I think it's an absolute mistake for the city. It, it just doesn't, what we need to focus on is not having enough homeownership. The, so the average homeownership for the state of Michigan, for cities in Michigan, is between sixty-four and seventy-one percent, right? Um, so places that are, all these people are talking about missing middle housing and stuff. Yeah, they have seventy percent homeownership, sixty-five percent homeownership. Well, if you have sixty-five percent homeownership in your community, you have missing middle stuff, right? That's not what we have here, what we have here is a lack of homeownership. And I think that's really what we need to focus on. And I spoke with people about that, and this is sort of the, we'll talk about this later, but, um, I don't know, so that's the context, how do I move to the next slide? It's, uh, comparative data, the average homeownership in Michigan is sixty-four to seventy-two percent. Um, and, and they have a missing middle problem. And yet if you go to these conferences, it's all about missing middle, missing middle, but when I start, when I talk to them afterwards, or I'm gonna ask questions, and I tell them what we have here, they say, it's not a missing middle issue, you need to get people to own homes, right? Um, another rule, you know, so FS, uh, you know, Ferris State or Big Rapids isn't doing much better than us, they're thirty-seven percent. Um, I don't know, Ann Arbor, University of Michigan is forty-six percent, Saginaw is fifty-six, Kalamazoo is sixty-four, Alma's fifty-six. I mean, I, you know, I, these things don't, they're not comparable, but I don't know how you're gonna make them comparable, we're just talking about university towns, right?
Do we know, do we know what Big Rapids has done?
Uh, yeah, I could show you, there were, I don't have time to, I did, yes, yes, they have a huge push to increase homeownership, and it, and it seems to be working, they've got, here's the web address for it. I mean, if we had time, I'd go through it, but, you know, they're, they're acknowledging this, and I'm gonna go over some better stuff in a minute. Isabella County per capita income is ranked seventy-six, this, eighty-three counties in Michigan, we're ranked seventy-fifth in terms of, um, per capita income, there's the other places, Washtenaw, fourth, uh, Grashit's seventy-eighth, Macosta's seventy-two. Uh, Mount Pleasant has a poverty rate of about thirty-five percent, Alma's twenty-five, you know, I just, and a lot of that, I would argue, is, has to do with homeownership, homeownership builds wealth. And, um, I, I think, so, look, here's the strategy, I'm gonna talk, AARP funds can be used for homeownership and infrastructure, right? They absolutely can, it's a once-in-a-lifetime shot. This, uh, the Senate Bill three sixty-two takes Oprah, you know how we use Oprah for commercial properties? It's now using Oprah for housing property, so people can get, oh, if they're rehabbing a house, it hasn't passed yet. But if this passes, then as they rehab, rehab a house, what we can do is we can give them a tax abatement. Absolutely property, give them a tax abatement for a period of time, right? Um, there's a pilot act that is gonna not do what, you know, I, I'm not in favor of pilots necessarily, I have to talk to these people. What happens is people come in, they build these huge places, and all the money goes out of Mount Pleasant, right? There's some big company in Lansing that takes all the rent, you know, yeah. But what they're doing is they're saying, got a pilot's act, if it goes through, Senate Bill four thirty-four, well, we can do pilots locally. Well, well, they don't have to go through the state, they don't have to go through federal, they could, they could be controlled locally, we can use them to sort of build this type of stuff. Uh, the, you know, the neighborhood enterprise zones. There's an act out that's, that's, that's in the Senate right now to support that, to increase that. Uh, they talk a lot about increased flexibility in zoning ordinances, uh, reduced, you know, lower processing time. You know, and they were saying, hey, you know, if someone wants to build something, why, why do they even have to go through to a committee? You know, the city staff, now, you know, if the city staff had just designs they could give to the people, just say, okay, you've got this lot, it's this size, it fits, here's a design you can use.
Brian has some of those.
Yeah.
You have some.
Wonderful, wonderful, but I mean, just, and I'm not, this is, I'm not talking, I get you, but I'm not, you know, but I mean, you know, the idea is just making a quick scan, I apologize, I think I did it within the amount of time.
Ching, George, way to go.
But I think that there's some interesting stuff going on to take advantage of, that's all I'm saying.
Nice job, George. I enjoyed it.
Oh, George. Alright. In other words, you wish you would have gone. Okay, so mine was about lobbying. Um, when we do, you know, Michigan Municipal League, um, has lobbyists for us. And the two that I, the two, um, breakout sessions that I went to was lobbying two point O and lobbying three point O. The individuals that were part of that were, um, the State and Federal Affairs Division of MML. Um, of course, you've got John in there, that's somebody that you had talked to. Jennifer and Hursana, um, were very, um, very good at giving lots of information. And, you know, I thought, oh, they're just gonna tell me what, what they do, right? They're gonna say, this is what I do for you, this is how we take care of the cities and villages and stuff. You know, they meet with our legislatures, our legislators and our staff, their staff, they testify, um, in committees. They work with various state, um, departments, um, and it, with other interest groups. As new policies are developed and implemented, they provide information for us to be able to talk to them, right? And they staff five internal issue committees for us. And what can we do? We can reach out. When we, when they do something, when our legislators do something that helps, we should be reaching out to them and saying, good job. Um, when they do something, or when something comes up that's not going to help our city, we need to reach out to them and say, this isn't gonna help us, right? Make sure that, that, that is known. Now, this is an election year, so some of, um, I think that, uh, Rick Outman is moving out of our area. Roger Houck is trying to take his place. John Molinar actually moved in our area, which means that Pickard is actually going to get done now, because he tore it up when he went, when he first ran, and then never did anything to it. So he, that's gonna be taken care of now. So we have Roger Houck, um, who is our, um, House Rep, we have Rick Outman, who is our Senator, uh, John Molinar, who is, um, our federal, um, representative, and then we have two, uh, state senators, Debbie Stabinow and Gary Peters. All of these are very, um, they, you know, you'll, if you call them, you usually get a staff person, but they will take your name, they will take your number, they will, um, take your information, take your message. If you email, many times they will email you back, it's probably a staff person that does, but they will say, we got this and we, we took this information. But the one thing that, um, MML wants us to do is they want us to not just rely on them to lobby for us. They want us to reach out to these individuals as well. And as elected officials, it's very important that we reach out and we say, hey, we really appreciated that. Um, I talked to Roger Houck when we were sitting down, um, for breakfast, uh, talked to him about some of the things that he's been able to do for us, and how much we appreciated that. And then, you know, and those are interest, those are good things to do. But we also need to reach out to them when we see something come up. Something that, um, maybe a bill that is not gonna be supportive of our residents, and we need to reach out and say, that's not supportive. And that's my entire presentation.
Ah. It was interesting having, having, um, breakfast with, uh, we, about, yeah, with Roger Houck. I, I mean, the first thing he told me about was your work with Aaron and how, and they're trying to get that land thing through for us, you know, that thing. And he said, what they did is they tied it in with their veterans, a VA, a VA home or something?
Yeah, it's funding for, uh, free privileges to VA homes.
To VA homes, because they're hoping that it won't get vetoed, I mean, so.
So we're going to, you know, the thing is, is that when you reach out to them, you're going to get a response. Um, and hopefully, it will, it will move us forward, and we'll be able to get some.
Good job, Aaron.
Yeah, thank you. So at this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we're adjourned at ten twenty-four.